Greg, are your counterparts here?
Yeah.
Oh, here's Randy. Hi, Randy.
Barry's here.
Yeah, I saw Barry. Here he is. You guys gonna come up and sit up in these seats? Is Michelle coming? Randy, do you know if Michelle's coming?
Yes.
She is? Okay. Who else?
I think it's our...
Okay.
This is a joint public hearing between the Richlands Planning Commission and the Richlands Town Council. This meeting is called to order. If everyone will please stand for the invocation of the pledge. Thank you. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight thankful, blessed, and always seeking your blessings and your mercy. We pray for your guidance in all that we do, and pray that all that we do serves in the best interest of all of our people in this town and in the community, the larger community, and here under your grace. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay. Members of the Planning Commission and the Town Council, we have before us our agenda for this joint public hearing. We have public hearing number one, which begins at 5:30. It is regarding hospital special care clinic conditional use permit. So, John, at this time I will ask you to -- I'll turn it over to you, and then we'll ask for any public comment, okay?
Essentially, this is the business that came and presented, I believe, a month or two ago. They would like to locate in the Mullins Building, so this is the last step in their process to be able to open. As you know, we changed the zoning to add -- this is added use, and now they are applying for their conditional use permit. So, based on the discussion tonight, if approved, they will be able to complete this process and then be able to open their business in the Mullins Building.
Okay. Thank you, John. So, this is open to any public comment. Is there any person present who would like to speak regarding the hospital special care clinic conditional use permit? This is regarding the B3 zone. I think I'm correct. Is that right, members of the commission? Okay. Is anyone who wishes to speak before the council and the planning commission regarding hospital special care clinic conditional use permit? Apparently, no one is here who wants to speak on that, so I declare this particular piece of the public hearing closed. We will now have the -- we'll open here at public hearing number two. We'll go ahead and do that. Would you rather wait?
We have to wait until...
Till 5:40? Okay. That's what I'm thinking. I just had a second thought. Thank you for your help. Okay. So, we'll wait, members of the commission and council, until 5:40 for the second hearing. Welcome, Michelle.
There's five. Sit.
You all can go ahead and go back here, Phil, too. I'm not involved in the other ones.
All right, folks. I'm adjourned.[290.33]
Greg, would you mind to give the invocation, please? Thank you.
Right. Dear heavenly Father, we come before you again with the honor and privilege of serving the town of Richlands tonight. We pray, Lord, that we be mindful that in all of our decisions, we act with compassion, with fairness, and with respect to you. Lord, we thank you for all the blessings you have given us, especially salvation through the blood of your son Jesus Christ. Lord, we pray in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Members of council, before you, we have the agenda, and before I ask for additions and deletions, is there anyone here who would like to speak before council tonight who is not on the agenda? This would be the three-minute time slot. Is there anyone who would like to speak under unscheduled public comments?
I would like to.
Okay, Shannon Plaster. Okay. Okay, thanks, Shannon. Is there anyone else who -- present who would like to speak under unscheduled public Is there a sign-up sheet out there at all?
There is.
Okay, that's all right. Thank you. Is there anyone else before we close this particular opportunity? Okay, thank you. So that will be in addition to the agenda. Additions and deletions, Town Manager John O'Daniel asked me to add Tony Cordell. If you'll please look at the Roman numeral eight under A, we have planning commission request for a joint public hearing, but John asked that I put Tony Cordell above that. So we'll call that A1, Tony Cordell on the REC Commission. Are there any other additions or changes to the agenda?
Mayor Curry, I've got a request.
Yes.
If we could please move letters F and I, both regarding the need for Chief Ron Holt here, if we could move those above letter A and make those the first two things that we take care of.
Okay. So that would be F, which is dispatch discussion update, and over here, letter I regarding Halloween date.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So if we could move that, we'll have Tony Cordell as A1, and we'll have Chief Holt for these things as A2, okay? Which will be F and I moved from the agenda to the top, almost to the top, and then the third, we'll call it A1, A2, and we'll call A3 Planning Commission. Does that -- is that clear to everybody, what we're doing here?
Yes, sir.
A1, A2, and A3. Okay. Any other additions or deletions to the agenda? Okay, here, hearing no further requests. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'll make that motion.
Jeff makes the motion to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Chris makes the second. Any discussion? Okay, there being no discussion, I will ask for a voice vote, all in favor of approving the agenda as amended. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing no nays, this motion passes unanimously. Before us, we have Roman numeral five, the consent agenda. It has two items there, authorization to pay the bills, and before you have the check registers, and also the minutes of the joint public hearing on September the 13th, and the regular meeting also on September the 13th. Are there any questions regarding the consent agenda?
I have a few questions, Mayor Curry.
Okay, Laura?
The first, on the check register, check number 12589 for First Community Bank.
Hold on, let me look at it. 12589?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I've got it.
Mr. Daniel, a lot of those on First Community Bank are kind of grouped together. If we could start having a little note on specifically what those include, I know it's grouped together, but it would help us to understand, on the second page, check 12660 for Blue Ridge Power. I asked about this last month. It seems like every time we consult with Blue Ridge Power, we get a big bill for that. Is that because we're consulting with them, or is that a regular monthly fee?
I know some of it's annual, and then anything above, you know, in addition to what our normal annual, you know, subscript, I guess, budget is. So some of the things we've done above, like the battery, or some of these other things have been, you know, there's added cost to that, but I'd have to check exactly what that specific invoice includes.
Are they charging us to like, are they charging us $1,000 an hour to be on a phone call with us?
I don't know what they would be charging, depending on, I guess, the content or the topic, if there is an added charge or if it's.
But I thought we asked her, and then she said there was no charge for that because they were discussing the project.
Oh, yeah, it was supposed to be.
And that one may have been built into the original cost that we said, hey, we're going to, you know, we're willing to spend, you know, five or 10, whatever it was, to do the RFP for the battery. So that was built into that, the original cost.
Can we find that out for sure and have kind of a detailed, kind of a breakdown of what that cost is?
Yeah, I can probably find a copy of their annual, like, our annual proposed budget that breaks down, you know, what our, you know, what we pay and what it goes to.
Okay, perfect. And I've got one last question, check 12714 for Thompson and Litton. This is actually on here twice, another one, they both have the same MOU number but different dates, and at what point, I mean, should we not, not be paying them at this point?
12714, and what's the other one?
12646. It's on the second page.
All right. My first thought was that would be part of the SSES, you know, additional grant project that they were working on, that we're hoping to wrap up in the next few weeks, but without digging into it, that's my initial gut feeling, that's the only thing that we have going on that we'd be paying them for at this time.
We need to find out for sure because these are two separate, it's got a different month, but the same MOU number, and they're two separate, different amounts.
What was the second number?
12646, three up from the bottom. And the odd thing is that one says from July 1st through July 31st. The other one says September.
Do you want an update on those checks, all right?
Yes, please.
Clarification. Any other questions about the check register? John, are you good with that?
Yeah, I'll look into that, and I'll send you on email, based on what I find.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions about the check register? Yes, Jeff?
What is check 12579, Virginia Risk Sharing Association?
I believe that's our insurance.
Oh, for the employees?
I don't know if it's the employee insurance, or they like our personal property liability, but it's one of, it's one of our insurances.
What check number was it?
12579.
Right here.
It says second installment. Could you check on that for sure?
Yeah, but I believe that's what it is. I think some of those we do quarterly, or we do two payments a year to split up the year cost, but I'll look into that, and I'll get you some information.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions regarding the check register? Okay. Also included in this consent agenda are the minutes. Any questions about the minutes? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Rick makes the motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Jeff makes the second. Is there any discussion on this motion? There being no discussion, I would ask for a roll call vote, please. Becca, thank you.
Yes.
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 The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, next, on our agenda, Roman numeral six, scheduled public comment, this is a five-minute maximum. Is our timekeeper ready? Thank you. Okay, and Michael Yates, Michael, where are you? Michael, good to see you. I didn't recognize you. Nice to see you, Michael Yates. Welcome back to town.
Thank you. Hey, my name's Michael Yates. I live at 371 Plantation Drive in Hidden Valley. Been having some drainage issues. I moved in like four, five months ago. And I guess over that time, probably four or five times, it's flooded, it comes down plantation, and when it gets to the bottom of the hill, of course, it's not going to go uphill, but it funnels into my yard. The ditch actually like, is like, you know, funneling directly in there, and so when it rains, it fills that up, and it's supposed to go under a culvert, under my driveway. And so when the Town of Richlands, George West came out and looked at it, and he said that it needs a bigger pipe underneath the driveway, and so he went and talked to his boss, and they said that if I would buy the pipe, they would do the work, but I don't think I should really have to buy the pipe because, you know, it's Richlands, know how they have it scoring into my property. I have pictures also of y'all.
Would you mind to distribute those to council, please?
Yeah.
Thank you, Michael, so they can see what you're talking about. Thank you.
And, you know, in one of the pictures, there's a Appalachia power box, I guess transformer, and it gets up to like three foot on it also.
So to ask you a question here, this water is coming down onto your property, and in order to correct the problem, it's going to take a larger drain pipe. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's what I was told by George West.
Okay.
But if you look in the pictures also.
Come up here, please, so you can point it out to us individually. You can start over there and explain it to everybody, it's kind of hard to see. Thank you, Michael.
Sorry.
You want to take us in twos? That'll be helpful.
Yeah. Like, my house sits like right in the driveway, and there's a ditch that runs down, I mean, it's the ditch right here, it funnels out, just like.
Instead of pushing on through the culvert?
Yeah. Well, there's no, there's no culvert up here, because it goes uphill, so it, so it just has to come here.
I think that's the only thing, you know, I can't believe it, but I've got Finny down in my dreams and all this, and I don't know what actually.
Yeah.
And Finn? Where's it supposed to go?
Okay, it's supposed to keep, when it gets right here to the driveway, there's a culvert running underneath there.
Okay.
So he said that it needs a larger pipe for it to go there. My only question is also, before it hits that pot, it has to, it's going to fill up here regardless, right? So I don't think you need a pot from here connecting to that culvert.
Michael, come on up. We'll do it the three of us, and then Jeff, and, okay.
Right here, you can see it just funnels in.
Is that the pipe that's coming out that you want replaced, or is it?
The pipe that needs replaced, he said, was, goes under my driveway right there. This is the street drain, and then it just ends right there. It don't go nowhere else but my yard. It's actually made to funnel into my yard.
Okay.
I'll have a suggestion to.
I guess I'll help. I have a system there to here, but it still might fill up.
She can make it through here. It's still very low.
Yeah. Hey, thank you.
Members of the council, Michael had called me regarding this, and told him that he was told that he probably should come to council, and I suggest that it's always wise to speak to council. I would suggest that council consider what to do, and rather than making a judgment right now, because we have a lot of these things, requests, and yours is no less important than anyone else's. Thank you.
Thank you.
But I want to suggest, we don't have a street committee, and I'll form that later, but the last request we had, Rick and I went there, and I would suggest I would like two members of council to volunteer to go and meet with Michael and the town manager to see on firsthand what it is. So are there two volunteers, please, and they can report to us at the next council meeting? Rick, is there another person to volunteer?
I'll do that. The Hidden Valley drains are actually on my list tonight. I've met with the neighbors there quite a bit about this issue, so I'm, it is on my list to even talk about tonight, so I don't mind to do that and go with it.
Okay. Michael, where are you? Good man. So I am asking, we have two volunteers, Rick Wood, member of council, Laura Mallett, member of council. John, would you communicate with everyone and find a mutually convenient time, and then they can report to council at our November meeting? Okay. Sorry we can't do it faster, but it's probably best not to make snap judgments. I appreciate you very much, and it's very good to see you.
It's good to be here. I appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So you guys will coordinate with John and Michael, okay?
He's been here before.
Okay. Next, under unscheduled public comments, Shannon Plaster, Shannon, please come up. Thank you.
Well, I just wanted to come tonight. I hope that I'm bringing you good news. Hopefully you all feel the same way, but I met with you, Mr. Curry, on this back in maybe February, back in January, the county entered a contract with First Earth, and First Earth wrote us some grants, and last week, we were awarded a grant to cover feasibility flood study that will go from, it'll incorporate Raven, Doran, it'll incorporate Richlands, and I think we've got Bandi and Jewel Ridge also included in the study. We were awarded about $330,000 towards this feasibility study, and the county will have to do a little match on that, but I just wanted to give you all the news. I think that's good news, and.
That's great.
Shannon, thank you.
Definitely getting something going, so.
That's wonderful news. We really appreciate your work, and the work of everyone involved in helping solve this problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Always welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's good news. Thank you so much. There was no one else listed under scheduled or unscheduled public comments. Thank everyone for their input. Michael, we'll get to you. Shannon, thank you. We'll move on to Roman numeral eight, agenda items. First is Tony Cordell. Tony, are you here? Come on up, Tony, and you want to speak on the REC Commission, I think?
Uh, yes, sir.
Please do. At the podium, or do you have some handouts to give? Yes, come on up, it's fine, absolutely. Yes, come on up. It's fine, absolutely. Thank you, Tony, very much.
All right, so my name's Tony Cordell. I'm the chair of the rec mission, and I speak on behalf of them. There are some updates slash improvements that need done to some of our recreation facilities slash areas. And now the pictures that you all got, that's pictures of Critterville and some of the actual dugouts with the cracks and stuff in the dugout. Also with the Critterville, there's some roofing that needs replaced and stuff like that, so the commission has got together, and we've been working on this for a while, so we've got some quotes and stuff attached to this. But one of the updates is upstairs renovation of the rec park. So you can kindly look at that. If you want to go over there, you can kindly see, you know, it, it just, nothing has been done to it for years. And so, you know, with maybe the possibility of extra funding that we do have, we're asking, you know, a request to try to update the upstairs of the rec park facility. Of course, you have the cost there with it. Also, the pool renovation, we just want to get new fencing. Also, there's a slide attached to that. Of course, we'd like to spend, you know, we'd like to request something like a, you know, a nice complex or something like that, turf field or whatever it may be, but I think if we look around in our own front yard, we got to fix what's the appearance of, and so that's why I'm coming to you is we want to fix some of the appearances, you know, of some of the properties that we have, you know, in our beautiful town. So that's kindly why we're coming to you all, and hopefully, you know, the request will be looked at and taken seriously because it, there are some major upgrades, so. Also, the tennis court, as you go by the rec park, you look at the tennis court, it looks awful. You know, the fencing's bad. It has a crack in one of the tennis courts, so some of the things, some of the pictures, some of the things I'm talking about will soon be possible safety issues. So that's another reason we're asking for money as well. So if you, if you drive by the rec park, if you go inside the rec park, you can see that it's very nice. So we've done a good job updating the rec park. Most of that has been through grants and donations. So I've been on the, you know, the rec mission for probably thirteen, fourteen, fifteen years, and so we've got a lot of donation, a lot of grants, okay? So also, we is looking at getting a cleaning machine for the gym, okay? So if you've been belows and you kindly see that one running up and down, it kindly mops and sweeps and kindly dries really quick. The reason we request that, you know, you know, our budget has been cut, you know, quite a bit, almost in half. At one time when I was a boy, which I know things have changed, you know, we had, I think, six full-time employees at the rec park. You know, now we're down to one, so it's very hard on her and what part-time staff we have, you know, to mop and sweep that. It takes literally like four to six hours to do that. So that's why we recommend that. Also, the garage door on the gym, the reason we're wanting that is it don't open well, and that thing weighs a ton, so it's another thing that when we go to open that, it's, it's another safety hazard as far as opening that. So right now, you know, we kind of got it closed where we don't use, but we do need a garage door. Also, like I showed you the Critterville pictures there, it's got a lot of cracks in the blocks, some of the roofing, the shingles, they've seen their better days, you know, and that's where youth play sports. Some of those are eventually going to be some safety concerns that needs attention. So like I said, we've got, you know, the estimates in here. Some of these estimates were done, you know, when Marianne was on the board, so we did add a 20% for inflation, so if this was get, you know, approved or something, we could, you know, get some updated numbers, but these are the numbers that we had before inflation hit. But, you know, our area is beautiful, our rec is beautiful, and we want to keep it beautiful because if we continue, it's kind of like, I always tell my wife is, you know, once you get a car, if you, if you let the tires go bald and, you know, you let this happen, that happen, guess what you want to do? You want to trade it in or do something with it, so we don't want to do it through facilities. We want it used. It's beautiful, and we want to keep it beautiful, so please consider investing in our, our community, which I know you guys already are doing that, but I know this money can be used for a lot of different things, but we want to keep our town beautiful, and if you guys can consider the request, we'd appreciate it.
Tony, thank you.
If you guys have any questions, feel free to ask me.
I do have a question for you, and I've always wondered this, and you might tell me you've already done it, but like with these estimates here, have you guys taken these to the county and to like Cedar Bluff and even to the college? Because like with the tennis courts, I know they, they use our tennis courts a lot to see if they can help as well, and then that way we can all come together and it won't look so crazy for the council to, you know, for the town to be carrying that full burden. But if the other towns that are utilizing our area too, can they pitch in?
We have in certain things like the college uses the tennis courts or used to use the tennis courts. I mean, now they're, I mean, almost don't have any color. It's almost black, you know, and you kindly, you know, you kind of drive through Tasman, if there's nobody out there, they even got their lights on and it just looks, the interest in the Tasman, it's like, man, that is so nice. And so when you go to our rec facility, you look to the left and it looks awful, but we have in the past asked for help. We haven't got that. We could reach out again. You know, with, with the ARPA money, there may be, we have a room for us to get some more help now, but I'm sure they got their own things, and, you know, where this is in Richlands, I would, you know, I don't know if they would or would have. So I, I wouldn't have no problem trying to reach out, but at this point, it's always been no, so.
Tony, I would suggest regarding that angle that Shanna Plaster, who represents the district, would be our first person to contact.
Okay.
I'm definitely not opposed to any of what you're bringing, especially the, the playgrounds and the safety. I think that's a huge priority. I would ask, you know, that no matter what the council decides, that we do reach out to see, you know, if they, if they can, and if we all pitch in, and it's going to be less of a burden any of the towns have to carry and.
Yeah, and I think the only thing we have on here that you could, you know, probably do away with would be the slide, but again, spending this kind of money, it would feel good to give the kids something. You know, the rest of them are just upgrades and improvements and remodel or whatever you want to call it, so you know, hopefully there's extra funding or something that, that can go to the rec department. And, and I've, you know, I'll, I'll reach out to whomever, because we did reach out one time about the tennis court, and that was kindly put on a standstill with that, so, you know, we, we try to keep things away from you all, and because you've got a lot more important things to do, I know.
This is just as important.
It is, and that's why I'm here, but, and I know the money that we are requesting could go to a lot of different things, but however, we don't want our town and recreation as part of our town. We want that beautification of our home, our whole town, and that is part of it because if you go to the rec park on a basketball night for youth, if you go there for soccer night with the youth, you, you cannot find a parking spot. So I like my front yard to be mowed and look good and weed eaten and flowers blooming, so when, you know, with the tennis court, it's just something that getting to where you're going is part of a little bit of an eyesore, so.
Tony, go ahead, go ahead, sir.
Does the high school still use the tennis courts to play their matches on?
The ten, the high school, I think, just redid their tennis court.
Yeah, the high school's redone there, so they're going to use.
They're going to start using those.
Yeah.
And the reason I ask was because, you know, they've got some extra money too. They got some, a different pool.
We had asked them last year.
Okay, they wouldn't.
Well, it was like they were going to redo the ones at the high school. That's where they put them.
They haven't played on those in forty years.
That's why. So they wanted to keep it there, so. No, I had reached out to a couple of school board members about that.
They've been using that for a long time. That would have been.
They kind of used theirs until it really got in bad shape, and then they said, well, we better do something.
Yeah.
So unfortunately, in the past, we, we didn't do this before, but this is where we are now. So I wasn't there before, so this is where we are now, so.
I was just curious about that. I thought that would have been, kids already handled that.
Oh, yeah, that is already on top of that one, yeah. Tony, how close do you think your numbers are?
I honestly think they're pretty close. Like I said, we added a 20% inflation increase, which was about $40,000, and, you know, if we can reach out and do this again, and I can bring actual numbers as of that day back. But again, you know, I got a business, Richlands Home Supplier, you know, we, we'll order something today and tomorrow it's a different price, so again, we could be in maybe a same situation.
That's what I'm going to ask you to do. I'm going to ask you to get your numbers and ask them to give you 60 days on it or something and bring it back and.
But if I'm, if I'm wrong, would, if we were to, so say that we had the money, we could do this, we would have to put that out for an RFP because the numbers are quite large. You can't just go.
Right.
You can't go say, hey, Rick bid this for me, or Jeff bid this for me. We'd have to actually go through the process of the.
I would assume so. I don't have the numbers, but from what it sounds like. Unless it was something that was like one off, there's only one company that makes it.
Right.
But from most, it just sounds like.
But what I'm saying, Seth, if we could have the numbers pretty accurate from what they've got, then we're going to be on the high side of it. Then we can figure out how to, if we can do it or not, then if we can.
The only thing I caution you is, is that sometimes if you, you get so-and-so company to do that, then it disqualifies them from being able to put a bid in to the process. Is that?
It can happen. I have a question. Tony, first, thank you, and all the members of the planning commission. Representative is Jeff.
Rec commission.
Rec commission, I'm sad, bad. Anyway, I have a question, and you have requests from Rick. And if you want to prioritize these, are they in order of priority? In other words, if you couldn't get it all, would, maybe the commission could prioritize them perhaps? I know they're all important, and I want to speak to that.
No, they're, they're not.
I just want to speak to what you were saying.
I would say.
There are more things important. Everything is very important.
Yeah, I'd say Critterville because of, our youth uses it so much.
Okay.
Probably nine months out of the year.
Okay.
So it's not in order, but.
You're talking about safety issues, and then you mentioned that probably the slide would be the, the least of the things that you would be wanting. That's my son. He was the fifth or seventh person one that year who flipped off of those slides and landed on the concrete on his head.
He's talking about the slide at the pool.
Right.
Oh, that's from the pool.
That's from the pool.
Oh, gosh.
There was about 100 people there, and every one of them went, huh!
Well, I didn't mean, I didn't mean.
I know, but I mean, that's my favorite part of your proposal right here, and I was very excited to see that because I think that is a safety hazard.
Yeah, and I think, I think it just gives our kids something to be excited to go to. Me personally, when I go to the rec park, I don't look, I don't feel as excited as I used to, which I'm 46 years old now, but the high dives was always just a. It was just a highlight for me. It's like something challenging. So with this, with the picture you all have of that, I think it brings that same excitement to kids to, to look forward to.
I just want, I would like to have better steps.
And we've talked about this careless.
And a better platform on top.
Yeah.
So I really like this picture.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, that's, that's what was nice, and like I said, Tony, like you said, he's been down there for 13 years about like I have, and we've talked to death about this and what, and what we need and what we need to have and where we should be. It's just, it's just tough to, you know, you hate just to build something, and then 30 years later, you're like, you know, we probably need to replace this, you know, and, and, you know, and if we could, we always talked about that getting a schedule to where, hey, we can put this much money in it to do it, because even like over there at soccer right now, we've got a barbed wire fence, you know, 20 yards from the field. It's just, you know, if we could get some nice fencing up, and especially around the pool, that fencing's, it's about kaput, and, you know, it would just look so much better.
And with these requests, these are, these are not wants, these are needs.
And upstairs rooms, upstairs rooms utilized tremendously, and, you know, even if you renovated that, I think it would spike the interest and the usage of that facility quite a bit.
It would reach out to different things.
Yeah, different things.
Just limited, limited things.
Seth, Jeff, the barbed wire fencing you're talking, talking about, and Tony, would that be included in this 49-4 that you're proposing?
I don't think we, I don't think we did any.
No, no.
No, no, we, we didn't do any estimates on the field. That's just tennis court fencing and the pool fencing.
Tennis court.
The tennis and the pool part, yeah.
John, Heather, Mayor for me, how much did you budget this year for like repairs, maintenance at the rec park? So when you guys prepare a budget for the rec park, you don't put anything in for maintenance, repairs?
Years, years ago, we used to have like a $10,000 discretionary, if you call it a discretionary fund, for lack of a better word, to where if we needed to replace something or do something, hey, Eugene, go get, you know, the light bulbs for the pool, that would come out of that budget. But since it's sort of been more absorbed into general budget.
Yeah.
Well, no, I know that. I'm just saying like, so is there a number? Have they used all of it? You know, is there some of this like? Right, that's why I'm saying maybe we, there, you know, and some of these things too, and I know, you know, maybe things are different now, but we used to use, like, okay, for all this stuff at Critterville, that's, that's not very expensive. And we have, you know, they would send a street crew over there, you know, for four hours to fix roofs, you know, use, get the concrete, caulk, caulk all, but, you know, I mean, there's stuff like that that we could do, you know, that seems like a long time ago, we used to utilize that stuff. Okay. That's fine, but I think, yeah, I think that there's this, Tony, I think if, thank you for bringing this to all of our attention. I feel like we can work together to figure out how we can get it done.
Tony, thank you. I would suggest, I was just checking the dates on these quotes. I don't see one here. Well, there is actually. So these are from March and December of '21 and then early 2022 that I saw. These definitely deserve the serious consideration of the council. I don't know what we can do this very night. We don't know until you bring it, and thank you very much, and thank you, Jeff, for serving on that. What is council's will, suggestions? Should we, as I believe you, it's not an issue at all, should we take this into consideration at another meeting? It's a lot of money.
And one suggestion I'd make is, I mean, I'm all for this, Tony, but 70% of the people that use that rec are out of town. Okay, we've got Shanna and we've got another board member, and they have discretionary funds. And I think if, I would go, while we're considering this, go speak with them and say, hey, 70% of the county use this, and 30% of.
I mean, John and I, the last time when we redid the pool, I think John and I put up most of the money from the county, you know, to redo the pool. So I don't think that'd be any problem. I think if we had an idea of, okay, this is what we're going to do. I think Tony's, let them prioritize this back to us.
That's what I was going to say. Why don't we prioritize it and then?
And then get a plan together and figure out how much money we're going to need or be able to use.
And maybe they would match.
Right, you can give them some money.
This is something I want to do, and you have a good idea, Seth. I'd like to have the, whoever the superintendent is of the building or street department or whatever, to go by and see how much they can do. And that's going to start out, cut it down, and let's let them go ahead and do that.
Absolutely.
Like the, the block over at your top, let's get that fixed. The roof, if they can put the shingles on it, it still works.
Here's a suggestion. I appreciate everyone's input. Obviously, it's important because it's important for our community. I would suggest that you. Uh, I would suggest that you, uh, Jeff, who's the, our representative to the rec commission, be able to go, and you're welcome to come too, Tony. Give us updates on all that we've asked for, can you do that, Jeff?
Sure.
And work with the commission, and, uh, any other suggestions that have come across tonight, take those to heart and bring them back. Is that acceptable?
Absolutely. And like I said, we would have been here a lot sooner, but with a couple, you know, members not being here, it kindly delayed me being here tonight, so, but I knew it was, I needed to be here.
We appreciate the public service.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I have one more thing. Can we let Jeff go with George West or ever who?
We can look at someone.
That's fine, and I would like to include the manager.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, John and Jeff and George West.
Okay, sure. I think that's reasonable.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you again, Tony. All right, now we have, uh, we have Chief Holt. Chief Holt, who's going to talk on two things here, a discussion of dispatch and update lobby hours option, updates, and Halloween. Uh, I suggest, let's take Halloween first.
Okay, so I've, I've looked at what our neighbors are doing, and, and for the most part, they're, they're all having the trick-or-treating on thirty-first. Different hours, but for the most part, it's all on thirty-first. So I would say, keeping with what they're doing, that we have our trick-or-treating hours set on the thirty-first, and hours of five-thirty to, uh, to eight o'clock, and that, that allows the younger kids to get out before dark, and then it shuts it off at a reasonable hour, where we're not having folks knocking too, too late. And I, and I think that's gonna be a, it provides for a better experience for the folks down here, because it's gonna keep. If we have it on a different day, you're gonna get a lot of out-of-town trick-or-treaters, and it'll probably provide for a better experience for the folks that live here in town.
Ron, thank you. Before we get further, uh, is everyone amenable to the thirty-first? Usually we take a vote on that, so I would like a motion to, uh, for Richlands, uh, the town of Richlands to celebrate its official Halloween.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we're, on Halloween, that we'll do trick-or-treating from five-thirty to eight P M. in town limits.
Thirty-first.
On October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you, Jeff. There's a motion and second and discussion. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Rick.
Rick did, I'm sorry, Rick. Jeff made the motion, Rick seconded.
I was a little bit slow. Yes.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, council. Thank you, Ron. Now on to the, uh, dispatch discussion and update. Okay.
Yeah, so I submitted a proposal to our town manager, and you all should have that in front of you. Um, and when I made that proposal, it was, it was, I put a lot of thought into it. Obviously, there's a lot of factors that, that I considered. And, and part of that was the proposal that you had from the sheriff's office, their nine-one-one, their leadership there, former interim chief Hankins, um, concerns that you all had as council members, and concerns that the community had, um, obviously, because it's, it is gonna be a departure from the way we've done things for a long time. Um, I think the proposal that you have in front of you reaches a good middle ground, and I believe that it's still gonna accomplish a high level of service to our community, and it, it's gonna be similar to what we're, we're doing now, um, but in keeping with being good stewards of the public purse, we're trying to use our money wiser. And, and again, we're, we're still wanting to make sure that we provide that safe haven for citizens who need help. We feel like a seven-day-a-week lobby, our, the doors open ten hours a day, that would keep our current, uh, employees. We would, we would not lay anyone off. We wouldn't get rid of any spots. Um, we would still have a place where people could come after hours, after six P M. Um, they would be, uh, viewed on a live feed. That's gonna be accomplished by establishing a, a, a connection between our lobby camera and a, a TV screen and dispatch, where, uh, trained dispatchers are gonna be watching our lobby. If there's anything that happens there, they can relay that information to responding officers, and there's gonna be a phone there that when they pick it up, um, they're gonna immediately be connected to a trained emergency dispatcher, and they can come in for various different reasons. It doesn't have to be an, an emergency use. It could be, it could be general questions that, that we field every day after hours. So I believe the proposal, again, it still accomplishes what we've done for years, it provides that safe haven, and we're still gonna have a, a twenty-four-seven monitored lobby at the police department.
Thank you, Ron. Uh, council, uh, are there any, uh, is there any discussion here, um, regarding lobby hours? Uh, anyone?
Mayor Curry, I've got something to say.
Uh-huh.
I've read over this quite a bit, and this was actually, when we talked about it before, this was my favorite proposal, because I want to be very clear to the public and people who aren't here and who don't have this proposal in front of them, that, um, the lobby itself will be open twenty-four hours a day. Uh, there might not be a person behind that window between the hours of, um, what was it? It, it will close, somebody will leave about six P M. So from six P M. until eight A M. the next morning, there will still be officers, but there will not be the dispatcher behind the window who was an untrained person, an unarmed, untrained person. Um, also, when we had the public safety committee meeting, we talked about, um, we talked about this just a little bit, and, um, Chief Holt had, he's been very, very responsible financially. He's been responsible with the public safety. Going with this option, and I'm very excited to be able to say this, going with this option is going to increase our starting pay. We've got some of the lowest-paid officers in this area. This is gonna allow our starting pay to now be forty thousand dollars. It's gonna give raises to the officers who are there now to get them up to speed. Everyone's gonna be making that starting pay. Um, I've spoken with Chief Holt, and, and this is also gonna be a plan to address the compression issues for the veteran officers who are in there right now. Um, I don't have the exact numbers of that time. Raising this starting pay is also going to allow him to recruit and retain quality officers. It also shows appreciation to the officers that are there now who have been underpaid and overworked for so long, and it's time that this council starts taking care of the people and our first responders who have taken care of us. And just so the people from fire and rescue know, we will be addressing your pay issues coming up. The lobby being open, um, you know, it's, the lobby doors are still gonna be open, and as Chief Holt said, there will be a phone there that allows people to call immediately in, um, so people will still be able to go into that lobby. They'll still have the safe haven. Um, we are not losing any employees in this transition. Uh, everyone's keeping their jobs. We've lost a couple of officers, and the fact of the matter is, despite what Facebook will tell you, uh, some of those officers were leaving before we had any of these discussions. Chief Holt's doing a great job, and I support his recommendation here.
Thank you. Thank you, Laura. Is there any other member of council who would like to comment on this proposal?
I would, Mr. Mayor, I just have one question for Ron, too, uh, or for Chief Holt, I apologize. Um, chief, the, when you move these folks into a, um, I guess a clerk's position, you have other tasks that you're on plan on them doing, they'll be doing paperwork, whatever, whatever.
So there's a lot of moving parts with the police department right now. You know, accreditation was one of the things that this board expressed to me that, that they were interested in moving forward with, and I agree, I think it's an important part of, you know, modern-day police department, being an accredited agency. So with that being said, I've, I've asked some current staff to consider taking on a more, um, prevalent role with accreditation process. That's something that that person's considering now. Um, if that happens, um, we'll move some of the duties of that current employee to some of the day, the day shift clerks. Um, so they'll be taking on, uh, a, a role with some of the paperwork. I know we do, we do some of the paperwork for fire and rescue. Those are some of the things that they could help with among a lot of things, and I'll just, it's, it's Bob, Bob Morgan, I mean, he, he is a wonderful, uh, asset to the police department. Let me tell you, he's, he's phenomenal, and he's been a tremendous help to me over these last several weeks. Uh, probably one of the most knowledgeable people, and, and he's, and he's in a non-sworn position, but this guy knows everything about that police department. So I've asked him to consider taking on that role, and if he does, we'll shift some of those duties over to those day shift clerks.
Good, I appreciate that, and, and I just want to say, too, I, I really like this proposal. I appreciate your hard work, Heather, John, everybody that worked on this. And the thing that I think is great about this is, you know, as we all know, what we found was that, you know, that the dispatch was basically just leaking like a sieve. You know, it was this massive pool of overtime hours, because if you were shorthanded, you had to get an officer to come in and work overtime. But that overtime was, for the last two years, has been over a hundred thousand dollars, and the majority of it was found right in that department. So the great thing about this is, you fix a problem, and we get to reward every person that works down there and pay them a better wage, a livable wage. I think it's a great thing. It's a great step forward for our police department. It's a great step forward for our town. I just want to commend you, and we appreciate you, chief.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Is there anyone else on council who would like to speak regarding the proposal?
Something we need to act on, or we're just entrusting him to implement?
I got a question.
I mean, I want to tell him what to do. I, I trust his judgment here.
And you're, uh, that's my next question, too.
Okay.
While I think about it. Go ahead, Rick.
How are we going towards nine-one-one? Are we, when do you think that's gonna happen? When will it start?
If you, if you approve my proposal tonight, I think it's reasonable that we can make that transition in the next two weeks. I mean, right, the, right now, the way it sits, we could, we could switch to nine-one-one as far as dispatching our calls immediately. Um, but it's just a matter of, if, if you approve the lobby hours, I have to get a dedicated phone line installed in the lobby. I've talked to the town manager, um, and, and, and we've come up with some, uh, work at A N S, uh, which is the contractor with, uh, Tazewell County nine-one-one. They're gonna have to do some work along with our, uh, I T. provider, uh, service provider. Uh, they've got to build a V P N. tunnel to where they can view our camera footage in our lobby. Uh, that can be accomplished in a few hours. So if you, if you tell me tonight, uh, that this is, this is what you want to do, we can move forward, and in the next couple of weeks, we can make that transition. I feel comfortable. We've had, uh, uh, folks from nine-one-one coming down doing ride-alongs with, uh, our police officers. We've had a, just a robust amount of, of radio checks that have, have occurred over the last several weeks to make sure that, you know, we're gonna have good connectivity with the nine-one-one in terms of, you know, where our radios will work. We've not identified, you know, too many problem spots. The ones that we have identified, we're working on. Uh, Tim Holnaker, uh, from nine-one-one has come down. They've looked at our car, our in-car equipment. Uh, we've changed some things out to make sure that they're functional and working correctly, so I feel very comfortable at this point that as far as a nine-one-one switch goes, or the dispatch switch goes, I mean, it, it could happen tomorrow. We just have to do those few last steps, um, before we can, uh, implement the lobby, uh, the after-hour lobby service.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you.
Mayor Curry.
I'll make the motion.
She has a comment. Go ahead.
Um, are, are we gonna keep a dispatcher for the first week or two of, of this while we are seeing how everything goes with nine-one-one?
Are you telling?
I know that Bluefield told us they ran dual systems for the first, um, I think, and they said a month, but, but maybe not. When we went up there and talked to them, they, they actually kept a dispatcher, and they did the nine-one-one, so that they had a backup in case something happened for the first little while.
That's not something that I've, that I've planned for, um, but I'm, because I'm, I'm fairly comfortable with, with what they can do now as far, we've had a ton of meetings, okay? And one good thing about, you know, Bluefield doing this before, implementing this before Richlands considered it, is we, we identified some problem areas there that we needed to, you know, check.
Right.
Here, here in Richlands, and, and, you know, that, again, that's just a good thing about them going before us. I feel fairly, um, confident at this point that we can make the check, and we don't need to have somebody there twenty-four-seven now. I'll say this, if we find that, you know, we're having some problems, some serious issues, and maybe we come up against, you know, something that's challenging, and we're seeing that, you know, happen, you know, over and over again, maybe we could bring somebody back in until we work those bugs out. But I, but I'm, at this point, I'm, I'm fairly confident that we don't need somebody twenty-four-seven. We can, I think, just with the day shift dispatchers, we can work out the small issues that we know we'll probably have.
Has nine-one-one increased their staffing to be able to handle the extra traffic?
No.
And the reason I'm asking that is because Sunday after church, we had a child file at church, and we did not get an answer to nine-one-one with the first call.
Yeah.
It took a second call.
And again, I'm, I mean, I, I can't answer, I can't answer for Captain Davis or nine-one-one, and I don't know that they, you know, have, have added any additional staff at this point. I know we've had a, a lot of meetings, and again, they're intimately familiar with the call volume that they experienced from Richlands, because they went over those numbers time and time again. I would think that if there was an issue with staffing, that they would have let us know. I mean, they, they, they live in these communities, too. A lot of these folks that, that work there.
I just didn't know had they already prepared for that, because didn't they mention at one point they were gonna do extra dispatchers for that?
I talked to the sheriff, and he assured me there would be no problem with the volume.
Yeah, again, and, and they're, they're familiar with the numbers that we're seeing as far as, you know, calls coming into our dispatch center. Um, I have faith that, that they're gonna make the best decision, and if, you know, if, if it becomes something that's burdensome to them, I don't think that they're gonna hesitate to go to the county and say, listen, you know.
I just didn't know if they were ready.
They're also taking a lot of their calls right now.
That's what I was gonna say. They're taking our nine-one-one calls right now.
And transferring them down to us. So it's, I mean, the, the call volume is not, um.
What'd you say?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, they're, this is not, public safety has been something, the entire reason that I started coming to these meetings was because of public safety and nine-one-one, and, um, people can say what they want about research, but I think it's incredibly important. And I've done a lot of research on this, and, um, I will address some other, um, things that we're working on later on with the public safety committee. But, um, to be very clear to everybody, all the citizens, and, um, you know, I'm always open to any questions that anyone has about this. Uh, the proposal that we're talking about, the lobby, will be open, meaning staffed with someone behind that glass from eight to six, seven days a week. There is no danger of losing warming stations, um, because the county actually does those, not the town. And I am fully confident that if we are in a situation to need a warming station, Chief Holt will make the proper accommodations, as does everywhere else in the county. This is going to help provide a pay increase to the men and women in that department. I've got full confidence in the town of Richlands, our staff, our employees, our E M S, and the nine-one-one system. This is a very, very positive thing. Um, it's also a safety thing for the person that was in the dispatch area, because they were an unarmed, you know, and they were not a police officer. So if someone were to come in at three in the morning anyway, you know, it would be like me sitting there, and you guys probably don't want me protecting you at three in the morning. But, um, I'm very, I mean, you might, but, kind of scrappy, but, you know, uh, this is, it's a good thing. And, um, Rick, if you wouldn't mind, I would be proud to make this motion to move forward and accept Chief Holt's recommendation for this.
Can I, but before you do that.
Yes, please.
Because it was a, a fair question and a good question on what you had, ma'am, and I wanted to, to say this, too. One thing that I will not hesitate to do, if, if I find that there is an issue that comes up, that, that, that we're experiencing delays, or that we're not gonna have the service that, that we expect once we make this transition, I'm gonna be the first one to say, hey, we gotta do something different here. Um, I, I'm committed to, to making that happen if we run into issues, okay? Um, and, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm here to answer questions. If you have any questions any time, I mean, I, you know, come down, I'll speak with me. I, I would address anything that you have, so.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
I think that means a lot to everybody. Before, I know there's gonna be a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion here? Okay.
I think some of us have been waiting for this for ten years, okay, and this moves Richlands in the future ten or twenty years with technology. And we're proud of you, and we're proud of nine-one-one and what you're doing, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll second her motion.
Laura, would you mind to state your motion, please?
Yes, sir. I made the motion that council accepts and approves Chief Holt's recommendation for the lobby hours.
Option B.
This will be option B.
Just for the minutes?
Yes.
Option B. All right, and is there a second, Rick?
I'll second.
The motion is made by Laura and seconded by Rick to accept Chief, Chief Holt's recommendation for option B. Lobby hours, uh, will be open eight A M. to six P M. seven days a week. Um, so there's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion on this motion?
Just to clarify, option B also mirrors the letter that he submitted as his recommendation.
The lobby will be open twenty-four hours, staffed by a clerk from eight A M. to six P M. seven days a week.
Yes, yes, his, his proposal, yes. And whatever he needs to do to make this happen with the live feed, um, and the phone and, and anything in, in this.
So can we say for the motion and mirror the letter?
The, yes, his proposal, yes, sir.
Is that acceptable, Laura and Rick?
Yes.
Okay. All right, is there any discussion? You got that, Becca? Okay. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion on this before we take a vote? Okay, there being no further discussion, I will ask for a roll call vote, please, Becca.
Yes.
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 The motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Chief Holt. We appreciate you.
Mayor's turn.
So Halloween is set for October 31st. Let's get that.
Five eight.
Five thirty today.
About thirty today.
Yes, ma'am.
May we have a five-minute recess?
Five-minute recess, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Rick, Laura said she'd gotten texts that people couldn't hear you, so I don't know if you have.
I had it on, I just turned it off. Maybe I'm not sitting close enough.
It's okay. Are we ready? Everybody ready? Okay. This meeting of the Richlands Town Council has now reconvened. We are on Roman numeral eight, A3. Planning Commission requests for a joint public hearing. B3 zone expansion at 106 Augusta Avenue rezoning request. So I will go to council member Chris Thompson-Witt to give us the council member of the Planning Commission's recommendation.
Regarding the conditional use permit presented to us, we recommend that the council approve the conditional use permit with no additional conditions. And that is the, the rehab that has asked to go into the Mullins Building in the B3, the new B3 zone. That was the first thing that, that we've talked about so far.
Do we need a motion on that?
We will.
Okay.
Let's cover this one, okay?
Okay.
So is there a motion to accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission, Jeff?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Is there any discussion regarding this B3 zone expansion? Hearing no discussion, I will ask for a roll call vote, please, Becca.
Yes.
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 Thank you. The motion carries unanimously. Okay, Chris.
We did not talk about these two today.
No, 106 Augusta Avenue. Can you enlighten us on this, John?
Essentially, the board have voted, created the B3 zone, I believe, last month. We've got another parcel. The Plan Commission would like to add to that and have it rezoned to B3. We also have a parcel that I believe is M1 that they've requested it be rezoned to R2 for residential use. So the Plan Commission has requested that we have a joint public hearing at the December meeting because they would, they wouldn't be available for the November meeting since we've moved it up. But they've requested we have a joint public hearing for both of those items at the December council meeting.
Okay. Has the commission considered this address and this request?
We did at our meeting.
Yeah, the Plan Commission has requested this.
Okay, so it's at 106 Augusta Avenue. Do you mind to state what that is again, John? And we'll, we'll have the public hearing.
It's a, I believe it's either a mobile home or a lot that they would like to put a mobile home or a home on. And it's currently zoned manufacturing. And they've requested it be rezoned to, I believe, R1 or R2 for residential use.
Is this one that came and spoke from Tennessee?
Yeah.
Okay.
So this is essentially the next step in you do the public hearing and then the Plan Commission make their recommendation and council can decide to rezone those two parcels.
Okay. Okay, so we will, shall we move on beyond that then? And we'll wait for the public hearing, right?
Well, I need y'all to approve having the public hearing.
Would you like a motion on that? All right, let's have a motion for this, please, to have a public hearing at a December meeting at, do you know if we have more public hearings, John?
At this point, those are the only two that we're aware of.
Do they need to be two separate motions to cover the two different things? Okay.
It'll be up to council, but how you want.
Do you want to refresh the, the B3 expansion and what that would include?
Essentially, it's just rezoning a parcel property. It's the parcel across the street from the hospital. I can't remember what the.
Washington Square.
Washington Square Medical Center down there. We're looking at, adding that to the B3s for the, you know, rehab use.
Okay, and the commission is studying this?
Yes.
Okay, so we just need, well, we need a.
We made a recommendation for a public hearing for both of those.
Do you want, should we have two separate, separate time slots for these, probably?
We will, but you can make one motion to have a public hearings at December.
So we need a motion to have a public hearing on the B3 zone expansion and 106 Augusta Avenue rezoning request.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Jeff seconds the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, John, we'll put that on the agenda for December. Okay. Next, Economic Community Development Department discussion. I, I have a thought on this and I want to share with council what I'm thinking. Regarding the Economic Community Development Department discussion, while we all know it's very important, I, I wonder if we ought not, we've talked about this several times, I do believe. Am I right, John? So rather than labor over it, to be honest with you, unless there is any need for a discussion tonight, I would recommend that we let a future council right on the verge of something, we don't know what, deal with this.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Wasn't that by me?
I'll make that motion to, to put this into the January meeting and let the new, newly sworn-in council make that decision.
Okay, you're making a motion. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion and a second on the floor to postpone any action on Economic Community Development Department discussion. That's what position, really. Is there any discussion on this? Motion and a second. Being.
Do we have any, any of the grants or anything that we're going to lose if that's delayed?
I don't know. I know we're still working on the contract agreement for the downtown revitalization. They finally got us to update a contract back today. Legal is going to review that. But I have, you know, the $100,000 for the revolving loan. They haven't said, is there a hard deadline or, you know, not? They just kind of said, here's the contract, you please sign it. And you left it at that. But I'd have to reach out to them and see if there is a hard cut off on, you know, when they need.
I can give you some direction. Sign the contract, turn it over to the IDA with your help and administer the grant.
I would agree with that.
I'll put that in the form of a motion that John signs a contract.
There's a motion on the floor, though.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Just a second. So I would get it in order. But your question is valid. Now, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Am I correct?
Correct.
To hold on this position, really, may I say, until January. Is that correct?
A discussion on the position.
A discussion on it, okay.
Sure.
Is there any more discussion on this motion? All right, roll call vote, please, Becca.
Yes.
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 Okay, the motion carries. Now, Seth, you bringing up another aspect to this. Share with us your thoughts.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, we were gridcoating with John three or four months ago. We're not to lose any grants, whatever you have to do, whatever you have to put to the side to do that, to do it. So I'm going to put that in the form of a motion for you tonight. Sign the contract, accept the grant, ask the IDA to help you if you need to, to help them to administer the grant. But we better not lose any grants that we've received. I put that in the form of a motion.
Okay, to be clear, there's a motion on the floor made by Seth and seconded by Laura to have John sign these grants that pertain to economic development.
Whatever it is, it's the, it's the small business revolving grant. Is that correct? $100,000 small business revolving grant.
Small business.
All we're doing is signing to accept it. He can utilize the IDA to help him implement the grant.
Okay. All right, there's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, I will ask for a roll call vote, please, Becca.
Yes.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, council.
Mr. Mayor, I got one more thing. Michelle Workman called me today from, called me from Kirby. We've got a grant for $1,000 from them and she needs a report and she needed it in May. How come we haven't done that? I mean, she sent emails, she's called.
The only one I'm aware of, I responded to the email, but I'd have to look into it.
So what was it for?
It was Kirby, something, $1,000 for something.
And the thousand, the thousand, did she say what it was?
No, she didn't.
Was that the Clinch River?
Valley Initiative.
Yeah, I got an email and I responded, but I can follow up on it and see what.
But she needs a report or she needs the $1,000 back.
Yeah, and it was our intent to give the $1,000 back because we weren't moving forward with that project.
Well, John, before you give the money back, let me work on that with you if you don't mind.
Well, it was, we were essentially going to reapply. It was for the green space phase two. And we got, you know, this phase two awarded from Como Plateau. But because of the delays in phase one, they said, hey, phase one's not closed out. We're going to take that money back. So we were going to give both funds back. And then when we were ready to move forward with phase two, after phase one was closed out, you reapply for both.
Okay.
So essentially, that's, was my understanding that, you know, that's how Ashley applied for that additional $1,000 for that project. But since it wasn't moving forward.
Do you want to check on his request?
Yeah, well, I'll follow up there and check on it.
Okay, and you can let Rick know or all of us. Would that be okay, John?
Yeah, I can do that.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so we're now down to Roman numeral eight. We are on C, water treatment plant repair update, backup generator valves, high-volume pump. And there's a lot of information here, so, or some information. So, John, I will ask you to help us, please.
All right, so essentially, we, our staff are working on getting quotes for those three things the council told us to move forward with. Want to make sure we're all on the same page. We plan on placing those orders this week. The backup generator, you have the letter in your packet that essentially from the manufacturer that says, from what their, you know, assessment is, is it still in good shape, worth the upgrades? The total cost for that's going to be $125,386. So I want to make sure everybody's good with that letter and we will move forward with those upgrades.
How much is the backup generator improvements or whatever?
It's $125,386.
Thank you, John. Okay.
And then the valves, we got two quotes for that. It's going to be just under $24,000, so it'll be $23,985. And we're looking at a 14 to 16-week turnaround on that. So we plan on placing both those orders this week. If everybody's still on board with the discussion we had last month. The high flow, or high-volume pump is a little more difficult. We're still working to try to get some quotes on that. But as soon as we do, we will move forward with that as well.
The valves that you're ordering, are they the battery backup or not?
No, they're the regular, because the generator will be replaced. So we went with the, the regular valves that, because they wouldn't need the battery backup.
Right.
Okay. Thank you, John. Are there any questions here regarding, I think we had a motion last time to support this and you're giving us prices.
I want to make sure everybody's still good with that, especially with that letter coming back, that everybody's just good with what they said before, you know, going to spend a, you know, $120,000, $125,000.
I, I think that's appropriate. And I appreciate the report. Is there, are there any questions here about moving forward with these needs for the water treatment plant repair update?
Do you need a motion, Mr. Mayor?
I'd probably be helpful because he's in question about the money, right?
It wouldn't hurt.
Mr. Mayor, I'll put that in the form of a motion that we go ahead and approve these two expenditures for the valves and the backup generator for our water treatment plant.
There's a motion on the floor.
And I'll second that.
Rick, this is the second. Any discussion on this motion? This is a motion to, these are round numbers I'm giving you to approve. $125,000 for the backup generator and $24,000 for the valves. The high-volume pump is yet to be determined. All right, so there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? There being no discussion, I would ask for a roll call vote, please, Becca.
Yes.
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 The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, council and staff, for your work. Okay, next is item D, water treatment and wastewater treatment plant long-range plan discussion. Okay, John?
So essentially, Jeff called me the other day and was asking kind of where we were, you know, since we are doing some of these upgrades. And I told him essentially, we're still looking at the, you know, one year from when they originally bid to rebid them. And so he asked me to kind of give an update of where we were. We're still sticking, that's still our long-term plan to rebid them, probably, you know, under a year from now. And hopefully, by then, prices have kind of, you've mellowed out and we can, you begin having that work done for the remaining items that need to be replaced at both of those facilities. Do you have any more questions or?
No, that's what I was just wondering. I didn't know if we could maybe even reach out to the Virginia Resources Authority or something, look at possibilities, some other grant funding for.
Yeah, I can talk to Rick. Said Rick, it would. I can reach out to him, see if he can give me a contact and we can see what else is, you know, out there.
Thank you, John. Any further discussion on this?
I just think something that we need to not, not overlook because we need to replace the system. So that's something that needs to be in our back of our mind for long-range planning.
Definitely does.
And, you know, especially with the increases, because he had talked about, I think John had mentioned before about using, designating some of these relief and recovery funds for the increase in what the bid originally was. So I think that's something we just need to.
We don't need to put it on the back burner.
Absolutely not. Yes.
We have to have potable water. We have to have a way to dispose of waste that is safe and in compliance with current standards. Thank you. Are you okay with that, John? Anybody else from council want to comment? Okay, thank you. Electric system, solar ordinance update and rates discussion. Okay, John or attorney and or?
So I'll, I'll start with the solar ordinance update. We've gotten a draft back from GDS. I'm working with staff. You know, we don't have somebody that's an electrical engineer, so I'm having to rely on some other resources we have, you know, through Blue Ridge, you know, other municipalities that have electrical engineers on staff. I talked to them about how they've implemented, you know, this solar exchange process. The proposal we have right now has some rates in there of how we would buy back the excess electricity from somebody that's generating it from. The proposal we have right now has some rates in there of how we would buy back the excess electricity from somebody that's generating it from solar. And before we start considering what they've drafted, I want to make sure that we can handle it on our end. I want to make sure we don't say, hey, we'll buy back your power if we don't have meters and things to make sure we can track it accurately. Some places don't buy back the excess, it just goes on the system. But, you know, I think the intent would be to hopefully, you have a way where we can buy it at a lower rate than we would buy it anywhere else, but still give the customer a little bit of a benefit for, you know, selling us our excess electricity. So we're still working on that, and hopefully, we'll be able to have a final kind of proposal to discuss at our next council meeting. But, you know, it's not being an electrical professional, not having a engineer on staff anymore, makes it a little bit difficult, a little bit slower than what we'd hoped. But we're still working through that, and hopefully, we'll have a finalized draft that we can, you discuss at our next meeting.
Okay. Thank you, John.
Could I say something?
Sure, Doug. Go ahead.
I was wondering, could you reach out to the IDA and let them work on this with you? They've got some pretty smart people on the IDA, and they would ask that you give them a copy of the draft and kind of work with them.
I'm not seeing the need to bring them in until we figure out, because they're not going to know how our system works. So I want to make sure that we have, you can do it before we start putting out the draft out there. So if it does change.
I mean, I don't see why the ID, the IDA couldn't work with you with the drafts. I mean, they've got some pretty smart people and more heads than one. And they've got a lot of proposals, the IDA does.
Doug, I think that's a good idea. I think what could happen is once he has a little more research, he could engage them. But I think it's going to take a little bit more on a guess. I don't know either.
I just don't want to mislead them to, you know, give them this proposal, says, oh, yeah, we'll buy back your electricity at this rate. And they're all excited about it, and then we realize we can't facilitate it on our end.
I guess my position is, you're formulating it now, and what the town's going to do. And I can't see a reason why that you would keep the IDA in the dark and not let them work with you, because they're going to be using that. And they've got a lot of proposals with the electric system. So I just think it'd be a good idea, why not work with them? You know, work it together. And I think it's, that's what happens to the town hall. They make all the decisions without getting their committees or the community involved. Okay, why not get the ID, the IDA involved and let them come up with ideals also? I mean, that's my position.
Thank you, Doug. Okay.
Could you, could you give them?
That's what council, you know, I just feel like it's overcomplicating where we are right now, but I'll leave that up to council.
I mean, I know one IDA member is working with the governor and for grants and so forth. It would help them a lot to get those grants if they're working with you on our system. And with the governor and Hackworth and the IDA and you working together, I think you'd come up with a much better product. And I would hope the council would.
I didn't share the draft with anyone when I asked you for it this week. That was why I asked, because members were asking me, you know, can we see the draft proposal? But after you asked me to, I didn't share it with anyone. But I don't think that there's anything wrong with you sharing the draft with them, even if it's not, you don't, I'm not saying you have to have another meeting or anything like that. But if they want to make some suggestions or redline it for you or ask a question, you know, I don't, I don't see any harm in that. I think that would be appropriate. If you wanted to share it with the members of the IDA, let them know it's confidential, you know, at this point still, because we don't know what we want to do. And I understand, we don't want this out. You haven't made a final decision, so you don't want everybody in the public to say, well, this is what we're going to do, and then we do something different. I understand that. And just let them know that. But I don't see any problem with, you know, sharing the draft of that with them, let them make, you know, input suggestions, whatever. Or ask questions, you know. I, I don't have any issues with that.
Any other?
I've got one, Mayor. The last time I was on council, I asked Tim Taylor about if you could put solar. And he says that we have to have an ordinance because we don't have it. So.
They're working on that. That's what the draft they're referring to.
Okay. That's the draft you're working on. Now, on the solar buyback, usually how that works is somebody uses so much power, then what they, when it's running backwards, it's just taking their power bill back down. So.
And we just got to make sure that we have the meters and the infrastructure and the billing software and things of that nature that can allow that. Because some of the meters, it tracks movement no matter which way it is, so.
That's why, that's why when we got the new meters a few years ago, that's the ones we bought that would do that for us.
And I just want to make sure that we can do something before we, you know, tell everybody we can.
Okay.
I think, John, what I'm getting without a motion, there is a desire to engage the commission, the plant, I mean, not the commission, the IDA. And so you can engage them in some way that is productive. And I, I think everybody, everyone understands the need for not saying things that we don't know. Like you can produce this much electricity and sell it back to the town of Richlands and make money. We're not in the business of losing money, and that's it. Simple. Thank you. Okay. Let's move on. We've covered F. We're on G, forensic audit discussion.
Before we move on, we had rates.
We had rates discussion, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry. I missed it. Rates discussion. I don't know what to do there, so I'll lead, I'll depend on you, John.
That's essentially just a follow-up from the public hearing we had about mirroring our rates as best we could to AEP.
Okay. I'm sorry. I was a little lost on that. We want to read the agenda. Pardon me. Rates discussion. So no one came forth to speak to the mirroring of AEP rates. Is there any discussion?
I, I just have a question, Mr. Mayor, around the same topic. And we've been talking about long-range planning and those kind of things. And the contract that you sent me that we are going to lose is about 14 months now. So we're getting, we're winding down, and that's on the two megawatts. Have you, what's the plan? Is there a plan to replace that, or are we going to have to go out to open market?
I think it'd be, as of right now, I think it'd have to be open market.
Okay. So along that discussion, I'm looking at some, I've talked to some members of the IDA. I've been pursuing some power generation ideas. We have some that we think are viable that I'm working on right now. But there are some questions with that. And I don't know, like, I guess, who, can I come and sit down with you? Who do we need to talk to about? Because there's some things, there's questions that I can't answer when we're going down this path. You know, one is, if we brought in power generation, this is a generalized question, I think, I feel like we can talk about this. But if we brought in some type of power generation, let's say we could generate five megawatts. But the contract that we are replacing is only two megawatts. Now, does that mean if the town of Richlands was generating five, can we use that to offset one of the other things? Or are we contractually obligated to buy X power under those contracts? And you may not know the answer to that either.
I think, you know, some of, some of the contracts we have, when we don't use it all, we can sell it back.
Okay.
You know, at a loss.
So we could offset that.
At least we're able to, like, get some of the money back. So, you know, if we were to have that issue where we're generating more, or maybe we don't, because some of it, you know, about maybe, I guess, like 10 to 15%, we're buying on the open market every year because we're having to fill that gap. You know, you don't want to have a, you know, block and always be over.
Okay.
So, you know, there's some, you know, fluctuation every month where, you know, we might not quite have it, or in the winter when it's colder, we pull more. You know, we're buying kind of consistently on the, you know, mark. So maybe it would get rid of some of that fluctuation and.
Well, the reason I'm asking that is, when we're, when I'm calculating this, I need to know, you know, okay, is it five? You know, can we, if we had some way to generate five, can we do that? There's a lot of, you know, factors involved in that, cost and, and everything else. But I appreciate your answer to that, but.
But we can meet, and there's people I know we can call that can help.
I think that would be great, if you can set something up with me this week. We've got, we're getting really close. What, what my plan is, I want to bring something back to this council to throw out a proposal in the next two months, because we are 14 months away from losing a two-megawatt contract that we buy at about three and a half cents. That may not include transmission, that's the kilowatt rate. However, if you go onto the open market today, and we have to buy that, when you buy on open market, it's what, 15?
I don't, it's going to be higher.
It's expensive. So then you take two megawatts out of our power load at three and a half, you mix in, change that to 15 cents, then it's dramatically going to increase our electric prices. No choice, no, without doing that. So we have a narrow window, we have 14 months, to prepare and plan to either, we do nothing, and we buy it on the open market, and everybody's power bill goes up. Or we look if, if there is an alternative in power generation that we can do that. So if you can meet with me this week on that, I kind of tell you, I can go into more detail about what I'm talking about.
Text and we can schedule it.
Okay. That'd be great.
Seth, can I be involved in that? Because I know a few things on that.
Yeah.
Where I worked on the power the last time.
It's up to the mayor, but I don't have any issue with that.
I'm asking, may I?
You may.
Thank you.
I think it's fine. What I'm going to suggest as far as this discussion, there was a motion to mirror AEP's rates, and I don't know where to go with that. So I would seek input from members of council. That's what you said this is about. And Doug made the motion, I think Laura said, I can't recall exactly how that was. But it's a broad motion, so I don't know where to go with that. I'll seek help.
The motion was for the public hearing.
For the public hearing, not to mirror.
Yeah, that I said.
Okay. I'm sorry. Well, so we had a public hearing, there's no input.
I mean, I'd still like to explore doing that.
Okay.
You know? I, I think we didn't have a lot of people show up because they didn't know. I don't think it was.
Doug, I think you're right. I think it deserves exploration. I don't think personally, and I may be wrong, that we need a motion to mirror that right now, because I don't really know what that means.
Sure.
Well, Doug, I.
It's too broad.
I want to talk on that, just to say.
Go ahead.
If we mirror it right now, and we could start generating our own power, it would kind of hurt the public if we could actually come down. If we mirror it, then we're whatever they say from now on.
Well, at that point, we could always.
Yeah, but let's just, if you, if you don't care, can we just leave it like it is for now? Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Doug.
How far?
We got 14 months.
Okay. I mean, I've been, well, I have people that's been talking to the governor. How far advanced are you on your?
Well, I mean, if, what, what my game plan is, I'll talk, sit down and talk with John, because there's a few technical things that I need to line out, want to get some people on the phone. He's not an electrical engineer, and I'm not an electrical engineer, but there are some questions that we need to answer. Once we get that answered, I think that I could come back in November and be prepared to put out an RFP along these lines. There's a few things that we have to answer. And a lot, there's been a lot of talk of solar, that's not what I'm talking about. Solar infrastructure takes longer to build. It's, it's a lot more cost. You know, I'm looking into just a gas-fired turbine right now, and there are some that, you know, generate five megawatts. There's bigger ones, smaller ones, whatever. There's a lot of different. And I think the end blend for this over the next 10 years for Richlands might look like a bunch of different things. You know, it might be solar, it might be gas, it might be other things as well. But, but we have to get there, and this one is something that we can implement pretty quick. But we are on a narrow window, because it's, we have 14 months to be able to get somewhere where we can replace this. And that's what I'm trying to set us up to do. But if we can be ready, November, Decemberish, to put out an RFP for this, and then, because we don't know, you know, we need to know what that's going to look like, and we can't do it until we can intelligently say, this is what we are seeking. And then we can start going down that path.
We're working on the same lines. We're working with the governor, Hackworth, and the IDA. And they're coming up maybe with some grants and money that will help that situation. Okay?
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. Can we move on? Everybody good on that topic?
Yes.
Okay. I think we're now on G. Is that correct? Forensic audit discussion.
Yes.
So John has included information here. Has everybody had an opportunity to read that?
So essentially, this was just a draft example of an RFP that I found from the city of Bristol. They put it out. From what I was told, I don't think they actually moved forward with this, but this is just kind of like an example of what we would put out. We'd have to modify it, because this is more project-based. But if this is something the council wants to move forward with, we put it out as an RFP on EVA, anywhere else that we feel that would, the potential businesses would be interested in this. We would kind of need an idea of, like, what the focus is. Is it all-town accounts that you, you want us to look at? And then how far back? You know, if we say, you know, just two or three years, I'm sure the cost will be much less than if we say 10 years. So we just kind of like, I need some directional kind of.
Parameters.
Yeah. A little bit of parameters of what you want them to look at and look for. So then when we put it out there, it's, you know, they kind of have an idea of what you were expecting from them.
Okay. Counsel, I would ask that you give John some direction on this proposed audit, forensic audit. So he needs direction on how many years, and are we talking all departments? Is that what you want to know?
Kind of, you know, the area of focus. And if it isn't, the, the town's full, you know, accounting, financial profile.
Okay.
Yeah. I would say, keep in mind, too, the narrower you make the focus, if there's things that, I mean, obviously, I think all of us have some questions about some things that have went on. And so the narrower you make the focus of that, the less the cost is going to be, because they're going to know, you know, it'll, all right, it'll take me this long to get through this, instead of just a broad brush of that.
So are we able to give you that direction at this point?
What, I mean, what I, what I think the council should envision is maybe like, go back seven years and check all accounts. And I think, we're not trying to get anyone in trouble or anything like that. I think if we go back seven years and we see what mistakes we've made and misappropriated money, then this will be a roadmap for the future that we won't make those mistakes. I know we've talked about, there was a million dollars. It was misappropriated. I'm not saying anybody stole it, but it was used for the, a different reason than it was entitled for. Stuff like that. And if we do a seven-year, all departments, this will get, it will be expensive, a little bit expensive, but it will save money in the future. And we will not make those same mistakes that has brought the town, I think, five years ago, six, we had reserves of millions. Now we're in a whole hife million dollars. So we want to see how not to blow millions in the future that we did the last seven years.
Well, I think the VDOT portion of that we'll solve later. But I do think that is one of the things that, that I would recommend, that, you know, have the forensic auditor look at. You know, we looked at a lot of data with that, and again, I'll get into it later, but there might be some things that they could pick up where this was submitted, or it wasn't, you know what I'm saying? They might see something that we can't see from just the generalized reports.
I mean, my only problem with not doing the whole thing is you can cherry pick what you want to look at, and someone could make sure that we don't look at other things. I mean, why not look at all departments, see what's went on for the last seven years, and see the mistakes that we've made? And I don't think anyone can pick out certain areas that you want to exclude.
I'm okay with that. I'm just, I'm curious, I guess, to see what the cost of that would be.
Doug, I follow what you're saying. I think, John, I would suggest, and I will ask for council input here, that you try to follow up with what it would be with the full scope, auditing everything for seven years, or five years, or three years. Get some various estimates, if that's possible.
I'll do three, five, and seven.
Is, I'm just throwing out numbers. These may not be the right numbers. I'm choosing odd numbers, three, five, and seven. And that will give the council a starting point, so they know how much it would cost the town to do the audit based on various lengths of time. But maybe time would be with the first one? First consideration?
Yeah. And I think what you were talking about, okay, I wasn't in those meetings, but I was here on council, and I know a million dollars was misappropriated. Okay. Where did that money go? Which departments did it go? Which, how are you going to choose which department you want to look at? Who got that money? What they used it for, unless you do them all, you know? Because that money was misused.
When do we close the books for the year?
June.
June.
Do we have a contract with someone to do that already?
The standard audit, yeah.
I just wondered if we could combine the two and pay one company to do both rather than have to pay someone to do it twice.
It's hard to find a regular audit, auditor for governmental, and this, I think this is going to be, you know, maybe one or two firms in the whole state of Virginia. So I think it's going to be very difficult to find somebody that does.
A forensic audit is a specialized audit.
Right, but since they're reviewing every number anyway, they should know the numbers enough to close the books.
They don't make those, a forensic audit is a specialty with a group. One that does a regular audit, they would not have an idea of how to do this.
Well, I think John will.
But I'm sure our auditor would be more than willing to, you know, answer any questions or provide with any, you know, old.
I was just trying to conserve costs a little bit since we were paying somebody to look at all the money.
I don't think our current auditor does financial or forensic audits. Because when I've asked him about it before, he's like, oh, you know, he didn't, oh, yeah, we do that, you know. It was, you know, maybe he called to this person.
He's speaking to Corbin.
Yeah, Corbin. Because I asked him, I was like, you know, do you have an example of RFP or do you know of someone that's done it? He said, I think Bristol did one a few years ago and I went online and found this example.
John, I think the direction.
Can I say one thing before you say that?
Go ahead.
A few years ago, I had a company and we had twenty-six stores. And we got a forensic audit, not to get anyone in trouble, but to have them come in and do a, look at the company, how we were doing things, and give us a roadmap for the future. Okay, that's what you consider a forensic audit is. You go in and we were making mistakes that no one did anything wrong, but they, that audit showed us how the direction the company should go. And that's what Richlands needs. It needs a full audit of all departments. And it will give us a direction in the future, which way to spend our money for the best buck and help our citizens.
Thank you, Doug.
Haven't we already paid for one?
Isn't that part of what Davenport was?
The Davenport, that's what they, they're doing.
Davenport's not an audit. They're.
I know they're not an audit, but.
They're, they're supposed to be providing with direction and.
Where, where are we at on the Davenport?
I haven't reached out. We've reached out. I think we provided them everything. They're.
That's what they do.
Last I heard, they were.
Yeah, I mean, that's what they were. I know we spent some money on that.
I appreciate that.
I thought it was supposed to be back by now.
John, do you understand?
That's what Eric Young was talking about. This is what they sort of followed their guidelines that they told them that they needed to do to get.
That was more of an operational audit versus your standard financial versus.
I think we need those. I mean, I'm, I'm not saying one place or the other.
See where they are. They may be waiting for some of our year-end stuff to wrap up.
Yes, they're waiting to finish their, their piece.
So, John, or do you have a reasonably good idea of what direction council would like to go?
Yeah, well, I'll put it up for RFP for the full town financial review for the last three, five, and seven years.
See what, what we come up with.
Depending on what we receive, you know, we'll make a decision. Hopefully, we'll be able to get this out soon enough to have proposals back for the next council meeting.
Okay. And then regarding the Davenport, we have, it was something I was going to ask you, said that you have a question. We'll wait till council members can speak to that, but.
But I'll play, I'll get you on update on where they are.
Thank you. Any other thoughts on forensic audits?
Just one thought.
Go ahead, Doug.
We've got the million dollars that we know was misappropriated. Okay? We've got three or four million that we ran through in the last five or six years. And we were supposed to have a balanced budget. I can't comprehend how you can have a balanced budget and you burn through millions. I, I, I can't comprehend that. That's why to me, a full audit is very important to see how we spent. That's one, that's four or five million probably, that we want to see where it went and how it was used. And, and then we proposed a balanced budget every year? That doesn't make sense to me.
Good to go. You're good? All right. So now we're all moving on to payroll software discussion. I know, John, you might want to elaborate on this, but in the Public Safety Committee meeting, Heather was there and she expressed a need for this. So, John, you might want to elaborate, and Heather, you might too, to explain to the council what your needs are.
Essentially, the payroll software we have is antiquated and it's very difficult to use and make sure payroll is correct every month. Anytime there's a small error or an issue, you've got to potentially restart. So Heather is, you know, kind of proposed that we update our software. There is a cost to it, but beyond that, I'll defer to her for any new questions or, you know, further information.
Heather, go ahead.
Well, I'm no IT person, but basically, the one that we use now doesn't directly feed into any of like the other software. So we have to do like journal entries for everything. And if, well, I'll give a good example. Like if my kids were sick and I had to do payroll, I still had to come in whenever there was no one here. Well, for example, my daughters had COVID several times, just to get it done because it's so outdated. And it's a little tiny box like this big. I mean, no wonder my glasses get stronger every single time. They just will not transfer to another computer. You cannot access it when you're not at work. It's only on, we're only allowed to have it on one computer. It's not anything on the cloud or anything like that. It doesn't feed into the time clocks. They bring time sheets like this with people's name on it.
Handwritten?
Business down. They have a time.
Oh, those time sheets handwritten?
Yeah, they're handwritten, handwritten. It doesn't combine the total. I mean, hours upon hours are spent with that. We do have a clock that will work. And basically, we got those with some of the COVID money from the county, you know, when you had to take everybody's temperature. It's basically like a cell phone and it would take their temperature and clock them in. But that also doesn't feed into any payroll system we have. Everything is done almost one by one, day by day, and put in there. And if there's one error on the sheets, then you have to basically re-total the entire department. So it is very time-consuming. I've never seen anything so outdated. I mean, they, they can't even go in there and request time. Even when we got them on the clocks, like it won't even let the supervisors see everybody's time. Like I just don't see how it was time-consuming, like helper and time management when still yet, they're not even allowed to see it.
I would just suggest it's antiquated. May I ask you this, just to keep it moving and dearly with great respect? I recall what you said, and I'm glad you explained it. That being said, have you researched the hardware, the software that we need? And have you talked to the representatives of those companies who sell it? And do you know how much it is?
Yeah, it's in here. It's twenty-seven.
I've got these things. I couldn't read them.
Twenty-seven, five.
Which company?
This is through Edmunds. This is the only place basically that we can go through that will actually feed into like our current accounting software. So we've, we've checked other places, but really to purchase something else, we're still going to run into the same thing of doing one part is the journal entries and everything else. Like it just doesn't flow over to the accounting portion. Everything has to be done by entries.
Okay. And have you had an at-length discussion with these folks? So you feel.
Well, they did a, what do you call that, Frank?
Study.
We did a Zoom meeting and did all this stuff. Like I, I couldn't see because I was actually out of town that day, but I listened, joined remotely. But I mean, really, I mean, it's, it's basically.
It's basically a module that will link to the Logix, which is our records management software here.
Yes, sir.
It's a module that moves with that so that they can talk back and forth.
The modules.
Yeah, they share, kind of like share the information.
Is.
What we have now is a standalone software database, an old ASCII database.
Right, right.
Heather, what does the county use? Did you, is their software different?
They do use different software. And they prob, I think they use, don't they use the Southern software? I think, what most people use, if they don't use Logix, they use Southern software. Yeah, Town of Tazewell, Town of Lebanon, both, they all use Southern software. We've actually, me and Frank can, we've already met with Southern software, but Town of Lebanon doesn't have electric and.
So you need this for the other components?
Yeah. And I mean, it, it's the only one. We've already met with Southern software. And some steps were great and some steps were actually two to three more steps. So it just didn't.
Does it have, um.
Heather, do we have the money to pay for this?
No, not in there.
But can we allocate the money?
Well, yeah, you could allocate some money. I mean, I think that there, there's other places that may be cheaper, but it's still not going to go in with our system. So it doesn't fix the entire problem.
Couple of questions. How many employees? It's you and somebody else doing this now, right?
Yeah.
So you're going to free up quite a bit of time with the.
I hope to. I definitely would free up a lot of her time. I just kind of assist her right now.
Now, what about? What about, is there a web-based like clocking in, clocking out? Can you add that?
You do not, you do not have to have that. That is extra, but that's included in this, this quote. It, the thing is, it's very difficult, especially, let's just say you're on the street department and it's snowing. Then they have to come down here, go ahead and clock in before they start like actually getting out and scraping the roads. When, I find it hard to believe, and I think Rick shouldn't even go on a smartphone, that most people don't have a smart work. They can request time off in there. The supervisor should be able to go ahead and approve it. I mean, that way everybody's on the same page.
It's 2022.
Yeah. I mean, it's just, it's just so many steps to use that other thing. And a, a lot of the concern that takes up a lot of HR payroll time is, is employees. And now it's spent, like a whole week is every other week, two weeks out of the month is spent on payroll just trying to get it in and correct it and to the employees on time. So it's just a lot of stuff.
Time saver and ultimately, well, we would spend money, but we hope we can make it up on the end of employee functions, that they could do additional things with the time if we have this. Is that a fair assessment? That time management would be part of it?
I think it is partly fair. I mean, the thing, where, when I first started, we might have had five people hired and leaving one year. That wasn't temporary people at the rec park. But now that's changed. I think the whole atmosphere has changed. Everybody don't go to a job and stay there for thirty years anymore. People change jobs. Some of them change like changing shoes. So that part, portion is, I feel like, especially for her, that portion is really taking a real backside and it's hard to get all that correct because so much time is spent on just putting input in the payroll. I mean, when it's not spent on, you know, what the employees need to do when they're getting hired, what we expect, you know, reviewing those policies that's within our manual, it's not, it's not truly spent on the human resources portion of it that it should be. And which was fine when you have turnover of five a year, but when you're having well more, which I don't foresee changing because people just do not stay in the same job anymore.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So let me ask this. What is council's will?
Mr. Mayor, I put this in for a motion that we allocate the funds, purchase the software to come into the 2022.
There's a motion in a second to allocate the funds for the new software for the payroll to assist HR and Heather. Is there any discussion? The meeting had a discussion.
The part that this is going to interface with that we're keeping, that you have now. Right, that, that part. Is it current enough that it's not going to need to be changed in the next year, two, three years? Do you think it's adequate? Because, because I mean, do we need to look at a whole system?
That's what she was saying with the power company and everything because she looked at that, what everybody else.
I just want to make sure that it's good enough to keep.
I thought the same thing, yeah.
Yeah.
They use the Southern software, like they use that down there. And we would like to have all been with the same. But that's the only place that we can find. And I think John's had a lot of places in North Carolina. That's what they used to, still we use.
So that's what you want?
Yeah, I mean, it's not.
That's your recommendation. I got that. Okay, there's a motion for it in a second. Is there any discussion?
So we're voting to.
To allocate the funds.
Funds that we don't have, right? We're allocating twenty-seven thousand that we don't have.
We're utilizing ARPA funds.
Oh, we do?
Purchases.
Yeah. And they don't like when they say it, but we're taking it out of ARPA money. We've got to take care of the priorities and get things.
I just asked him.
Look, everything I've seen from sitting on this council is that we have let everything in this town be neglected for the last twenty years. As I sit here, every, every issue that walks through this door is because somebody neglected to do something. We neglected to put a roof on a building. We neglected to fix something. We, we've neglected our field houses. We've neglected our rec park. We've, we've neglected everything. Now, now I look and we're using software that nobody in the free world uses because it's 2022. We've neglected to do that. And it's a common theme is that we just have continued to neglect every single thing in this town. And sometimes you got to fix things. You know, this is the right thing to do. We're going to fix this. And we fixed a lot of things over the last six months. We're going to keep going, but.
I mean, it's.
I get, no, I mean, I, I get the argument. It's just, it's just, how come we're always in this pattern?
Because we've neglected to do everything. No one's playing for anything.
And, and that's my point exactly, even with the wastewater treatment, planting water. Yeah.
Hundred percent.
Just get it, let's get a plan together and go.
The pattern to rely on ARPA, is that what you're asking?
No, no, not to.
No, he's just saying, if, instead of always coming to this, why don't we plan this?
Why does it come to that?
How do we get the shapes, what he's asking?
Okay, you're talking about neglected. I agree. The money, we had plenty of money. We ran through four or five million dollars. We don't know where it went to. It went to the wrong places when we should have been taking care of the necessities and we did not. We had a council that should have paid more attention. Okay?
Thank you. Is there, not for the discussion, roll call vote, please?
Yes.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Payroll is good. Thank you. Okay, next, we have Halloween set. Personal, sir, personal property tax discussion. Uh, letter J, personal property tax discussion. John?
So we pulled what we brought in for personal property tax last year, and it was a hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars, four hundred and thirty-nine. So on average per cent, it was about sixty-five hundred and forty-four dollars. When the county did their reassessment, those, you know, usually we have a used vehicle, the price and value drops. They saw it jump because of COVID to the tune of, I guess, thirty to thirty-five percent somewhere in there. I don't have the exact figures. When they did the assessment, instead of, you know, putting it on the tax roll as a hundred percent of what they assessed the value is, they only put ninety percent on there. So although it did increase, they didn't go to the full, what their original assessment was. So as of what we will be billing out in the next week or so, is about ninety percent of what the assessed value was. There's nothing we can do about that when they give us the, you know, values of the vehicles. You know, at this point, if anything were to be changed, essentially, we would have to change the rate that we bill, which is currently twenty-one cent. And if that was something the council would want to look into, we would need to make a decision, you know, tonight as those bills will go out later this month.
Okay, personal property tax. Thank you, John. Updates. Okay, any council discussion here? He wants direction. Is that right? Okay, direction.
I brought this up last time because the NADA, like you said, then it's the National Automobile Dealers Association Guide. The car values have skyrocketed because of inflation and when nobody could find the chips, used cars were the way to go. I know the county did ten percent, but our citizens are still, in Richlands, we're, the, basically, they're paying twice and it's not right. So if we've got to change that rate, I think we need to take at least another twenty percent off of that and give the Richland citizens some relief because if I'm still here when the next budget comes, I'm going to talk about abolishing this altogether. Double taxing is not okay. So if you need a motion to change that rate tonight, I don't mind to do that.
This is something we do, just know that when we get to the end of the year, it's looking like we will be, you know, bringing in less revenue than our expenditures are.
Well, we should, what we collected last year is what we should be collecting this year. And again, I don't agree with it at all, but that rate shouldn't be going up.
When we budgeted, we budgeted an additional twenty percent in revenue. We tried to keep it at zero. But to get rid of any other increases, we bumped that number up based on what we were hearing from the county. At that point, it was, you know, thirty-five percent or thirty percent, you know, higher. So we went up twenty percent to leave, you know, a buffer because the personal property is only the, you know, this will only be the second year we've ever had it. So people are still learning that it's a, you know, bill. They've got to pay it. We're having to go through and find and, you know, clean it up. Because a lot of times, sometimes we're seeing people get bills for property that, you know, they don't live in town anymore. But it was on the old scroll. So as we go through, clean it up, you know, we'll get a better idea of what our actual collection rate is. But, you know, as I say, if we decrease it, that would be additional revenue that won't be brought in.
So would it be easier for you if I make a motion to decrease this by twenty percent each bill period? Or do you want an actual number on the rate?
Yeah, we need to be, you know, we're at twenty-one cent per hundred valuation. It would be, you have to make a motion to go down to eighteen cent or nineteen cent or twenty, whatever, or twenty and a half, whatever that.
What do we, what is our current rate now?
Twenty-one cent per hundred.
Why don't you go down to about fifteen?
Does that require a public hearing or does it require any of that?
Not decreasing.
It would, it would require a budget amendment because it's going to affect the budget, but.
Is that going to be under ordinance of budget amendment? Is that gonna be under ordinance of budget amendment?
Because you're decreasing.
You're decreasing, yeah. So you wouldn't have to do a public hearing or anything like that.
And could we do that tonight before these tax?
We don't have a budget amendment ready, but.
I mean, you could vote on it, then we'd bring the budget amendment, you know, for the next council meeting.
Would you ratify it then?
Similar how we've done like when you move money, like when we moved money from one department to another to purchase the EMS vehicle, command vehicle, you know, it'd be a similar budget amendment. There'll be the consent agenda, if that's the direction council goes.
So you said we're at twenty-two?
Twenty-one cent.
Twenty-one? So taking twenty percent off of that's about sixteen.
Sixteen point five.
Fifteen, sixteen, yeah.
If that's what council wants.
I'll make the motion that we reduce the personal property tax rate to the sixteen cents.
I'll second that.
I know it's not ideal, but with inflation going up, I, I don't want to see people paying any more than what they were last year. I mean, I don't want to see them paying at all, but I do not want to see them pay more than what they did last year.
A lot of the savings that we can occur, will occur. We're not hiring the economic development person, which they would be making, what, fifty, sixty thousand? That's high for that sum, right there.
So we have a motion and a second, uh, on the floor to, uh, set the personal property tax at sixteen cents, which is a reduction from the current rate of twenty-one cents. And we do not have to have a public hearing nor ordinance. Am I correct, Mike? Because it is going down.
We'll vote to approve it tonight, he'll bring a budget amendment, we'll pass a budget amendment the next meeting.
Okay, so you'll bring forth the budget amendment at the next meeting?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Okay, there's a motion on the floor and a second. Any discussion on this motion?
Sorry, what's this rate gonna do then, John? The lowering of the rate is gonna do what?
It's about sixty-five hundred dollars per cent. So that's, it's about thirty, thirty thousand.
Of revenue that we won't have, basically, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
And that's just the, that's just from last year to this year, from inflation. That's what is going up. So it's not really some, I mean, he said he planned for it in the budget, but this is just taking care of the inflation to try to help citizens out.
Also, the real estate tax went up, so we'll, we'll have more tax from that also.
They reassess personal, real estate as well?
Yeah. Yeah. They did, the county did. So when, when they go up, our taxes go up. I hear so many times, our taxes haven't went up in four, five, ten years. It goes up every time the county reassesses.
But our rates is what you're saying?
Oh, I know, the rates are the same, but when they are, if your property is worth a hundred thousand, they reassess it for a hundred and thirty, then your taxes are going up.
So if we left it where it was at, then we would have the thirty thousand dollars to pay for the software.
The software. We do have it, it's in our, people just don't want to dip into it.
We just increased our projected revenue by twenty percent. So we were told it was going to be thirty percent higher. Since we're just changing the project.
Okay. Jeff, did you want to say something?
No, I'm good.
So you're just changing it, Jake?
And you also had a lower, um, collection rate last year, too.
First year, usually.
So this may end up, you may, even with the reduction, you may end up evening it out to what you projected because your collection rate will probably be higher.
I see what you're saying.
Any further questions? There's a motion and a second on the floor, roll call vote, please, Becca.
Yes.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Council Mike. You'll bring forth the proper documentation that we can, uh, view and vote on, right? Thank you, sir. All right, next, VDOT paving discussion. John?
Mr. Mayor?
I'll defer to Seth. Seth and Jeff and I met with Corbin Stone, our auditor, to kind of get him to help, you know, explain, you know, our VDOT funding issue. And I think Seth and Jeff had a recommendation they wanted to bring back to council for further consideration.
So, uh, at the last council meeting, granted, I was kind of shocked, but I feel like this warrants some clarification because we did meet with Corbin and he was, he helped me understand what's going on. So I want to let you know that it's not a misappropriation, but it was, according to Corbin, he agreed with me, a gross mismanagement of public funds, okay? So.
That is his word?
Yes.
I mean.
It's a gross mismanagement. Jeff, you were, yes.
To me, it's the same thing, I'm sorry.
Well, it's, it's not, it's not technically, because if it was a misappropriation, I assure you, I already called Commonwealth Attorney, I already spoke with the sheriff, you know, I would have, uh, made sure someone would have been charged. And I want to clarify that. However, these people.
It was, it's a mistake. And the forensic audit will help find that money.
Well, no, no, it's, yeah, let me finish up. It's, it's. What, the reason I'm telling you it's a gross mismanagement is, the best way that I can explain it, because it took, I mean, honestly, it takes a little bit and you, and I'll be glad answering questions you have with it. But this is, this is the best way I can explain it. Every year, VDOT gives us, for, you know, it's a little higher, a little lower, whatever, a million dollars, okay? It's right around a million dollars. This has went on for many, many years. VDOT gives us a million dollars. Against that million dollars, there's a hundred-page grant document that says you can charge these items, paving, street construction, sidewalks, curbing, there's, there's a lot of things, okay? You're allowed to charge these items against that. So basically, it costs about seven hundred and fifty thousand to run our street department. And that's what allowable charges that we can charge back against this. Because originally, it's, is unique. Most of the roads, railroad, first, second, they're all VDOT roads. That's why we get a pretty, you know, good amount of this grant because the majority of the roads that we're taking care of are VDOT roads. All right, so what's happened is that when they would get this million dollars, they were using seven hundred and fifty to fund the street department. The extra two hundred and fifty, what they should have been doing was scheduling paving projects or large-scale sidewalk projects or anything else. I mean, I'm not, it doesn't, paving's the easy one. It's just a low-hanging fruit and it's easy for me to say, you know, paving. But it's been many years since we had any paving done in our town, six, eight years probably. And what happened was that VDOT sends you all the money. It's quarterly, so we get a quarterly allotment. They send you all the money, okay? We're charging back against that, seven hundred and fifty thousand against the million. But they've already given us a million dollars. So there's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars surplus. Now, some years it's more than that, some years it's less. Then what happens is, instead of appropriating things towards that or instead of holding that into a reserve account, um, the former town manager, the former, uh, whatever, what's your title, Heather? Finance manager, used that funds to fund other activities in the town. They funded, uh, general fund, they just kept the money in the general fund and they used it for budgeting processes. That's why I'm telling you this is a gross mismanagement of public funds. It is wrong to do that because there's a, there's an end day that you have to pay that back. So if VDOT called us today, we owe one point five million dollars that has been kicked down the road for all of us to deal with. Now, some of you sat on council during this time and you may have known about this or had an idea about this, but I don't think that you understood what was happening. Because I think if you did, and that's why, again, why I'm saying it was a misma, a gross mismanagement of funds because I believe it was hidden from you of what was taking place. You know, Mayor, you, you've been on council for a long time. I don't think you knew that they were taking money that should have been spent on VDOT projects and paying other salaries or payroll or whatever else they should be doing with that. I'm not, and so I'm not here, I don't, I want you to understand, I'm not accusing Jeff or Rod or Doug or anybody. I'm not, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, but the management, the finance manager and town manager absolutely knew what they were doing.
Can I ask you one question?
Yes.
Okay, if you take funds.
But let me, let me finish first, if that's okay. Because I, I need to get through this so you understand what, because Jeff and I have come up with a proposal and I think we can. Yeah, so I wanted to clear this up because I, you know, I don't want to say something wrong in this meeting. And I felt like what you guys were describing to me was misappropriation, but that's not the word, it's mismanagement. However, the, the danger is, and as we talked this over with Corbin, if you continue down this road, in ten years, that's two and a half million dollars. If VDOT called today and said, we want all of our money back, okay? We would have to take, now, minus out ARPA funds, okay? So we didn't have recovery act money, take that out of account. We'd have to take everything we had in electric, everything we had in water, everything we had in this town and write VDOT a check back and pay them. That's impossible. And that's why I say it's a mismanagement of funds because no one knew that ARPA funds were going to exist to bail us out of this mess. But yet they kept kicking the can down the road. So now, here we are faced with a one point five million dollar deficit. Now, the only good thing that come out of all this is we do have ARPA money and what we can do is use that money to do these functions, the VDOT grant. So it's not like, we're not just writing VDOT a check and handing it to them. We're going to do an activity that's allowable into the grant documents and we'll use our ARPA money to fund it. And then we get, you know, we're at least getting something for what we're paying back. That's part one. So what Jeff and I have come up with, we, we had this, um, this street paving proposal. And, and these are estimates, but it's about a million and a half dollars, okay? So you don't have to do all of this in one year. Jeff and I won't be here, but we're trying to make a suggestion to you. And that's why I want to do this publicly so you understand. What my recommendation is, is that, of course, you all talk it over, but in January, you prioritize this list. And I would go ahead and put an RFP out for all of this because you may get surprised, you may get some better bids. Sometimes Rick's been in that business, sometimes you get better bids and you're able to do more. But at least then you can pick and choose what you want. Don't have to do them all, but you prioritize these and put that out for an RFP. And then you'll know how much of that you can do. And you might want to do, you know, a million this year, half a million the next year. All right, so that's part one, Mr. Mayor. Part two of that is, we're still going to be in a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar excess from that VDOT grant. So my suggestion is, is that, number one, that should never be put into your budget. Those funds should not, you cannot look at that money like this is something we can use for budgeting purposes. Because if you do that, you're going to be in the same place five, ten years down the road. Cannot do that. This is your one chance for us to fix this mess that someone else, employees of this town, created for all the people who live in this town. And, and it should make you angry. Everybody in this room should be angry. If you're listening at home, I hope you're listening, you can call me. It should make you angry that this happened. But thankfully, we have this money and we're able to fix this. And for that, we're going to be able to do this paving that we desperately need in this town. But going forward, you cannot put this money into your budget. You cannot. You have to say, get with your town manager, you, as a council, go through that program book and say, okay, this year, we're gonna do an extra two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the sidewalk work. Or we're gonna do this project or that project. But this is a very good fund to, so that you can maintain all the paving in the streets. You can maintain all the things that we've always, you know, we try to fix and we do a good job here trying to make things look better. And this is going to allow us to do more. Now, the flip side of that is, you have to be tighter on your budget and you have to figure out how to come up with that shortfall. Because in the town of Richlands for the past ten years, we've used that excess money in the budget cycle. Can't do that anymore. So on the other side of that, there are some things that we're doing that we're going to see savings from. And you're gonna have to use some of that, but your next budget cycle is gonna be more difficult.
Now, can I ask my question?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I, it's a choicing of words, okay? Our auditors aren't gonna come out and say, misappropriated funds. They're not gonna say that, they're nice, they're too nice.
But let me clarify.
Okay, let me ask you my question. If I give you money and I have it in a slot and I say, go buy me a car, and you go buy furniture, that's misappropriated funds.
Right, but here's, here's a reason it's not, Doug.
No ands, ifs, or buts.
No, I know, but here's a reason that it's not. It's not because they have accounted for every single penny that we still owe. It's like an IOU, okay?
I know, but they've spent on other things they shouldn't have.
Gentlemen, both of you, uh, let's move forward. Let's please move forward. Okay, I follow what you're saying.
Well, and like exactly what Seth said, we got to avoid it so that we don't, so we don't do this. And I talked to another town manager and they just keep a separate account. Basically, a separate ledger page, separate account. We know here it is, come budget time, hey, here's, here's what's in there, what we spending on.
The recommendation is.
I'm sorry, but one last thing on this is important.
I just wanted to pick and choose every semantics, I think that's.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's not what I'm talking about.
We need to be focused.
It's, it's okay, so, the way, one of the things that the auditor told us was, some towns will take, let's say that you knew paving front street was gonna cost seven hundred thousand, okay? You would take two hundred this year, two hu, and you would save that up. But you're not using that for anything else, but that towns would do that. They would save that money towards a bigger project. And that's acceptable, too. So it's just all about planning and that needs to be a part of your budget discussion and your planning, but.
When we get the money from, uh, VDOT, can we, uh, earmark that?
It's already earmarked.
I mean, literally set it aside.
Essentially, it's earmarked, when we've talked to the auditor before, because I've asked the question, could we just set it into its own separate checking account, which we've got numerous because, you know, when you put it in the budget, put it in the pot at the end of the year, any overages we have automatically, you pull from that fund.
Right.
He did express concerns with being, um, cash flow. If we don't have that, you know, pot sitting there to help make payroll and, you know, all these other expenditures we have throughout the year that may come in before, you know, December, when everybody pays their taxes or some of these other revenues that, you know, we may run into a, you know, cash flow issue because we have no general fund reserves. The reserves are only water, sewer, electric. So it's something, you know, we can definitely look at.
He, he said right now we would be okay because of the ARPA funds.
Yeah, correct.
In a similar meeting, not with you and Jeff, with you and John and Heather. And Corbin Stone was on soon with us. And I outright asked him direct questions because I wanted to know. He said no wrongdoing, that, Dave, Mary General here. So I wanted to know, what are we doing here? So I'm trying to move forward with the town and not look backward, but do the right thing and use our money wisely at first, which is why I asked about earmarking and so that we could all understand it. Now, the solution, and it was very clear, my understanding of what he said, is it would be highly unlikely that VDOT would ever ask us for this money. But they could, but highly unlikely. That's what I heard. Did you hear that?
Yes.
Did you hear that?
That's what he said.
Thank you.
Like Seth said.
I just wanted, hold on, John.
Sorry.
I'm not through.
I thought you were done.
No. So I don't want to sit here and beat the pass. Let's please look forward. What is the solution? What do you want us to do? What do you want us to do?
What I would like.
I mean, just, I want to hear from these guys.
So what we propose, Rod, is that.
I will get it.
Is that Jeff and I, we propose that you put this out for bid in January.
For the streets.
For the streets. You get your proposals and then as a council, you all, and council mayor, you all can select which, how much of that you want to do and, and work with, um, with the town manager, you know. If you don't do it all this year, that's okay, but you might get great bids and you want to do it all. But.
As much as we can.
As much as we can, but we have the money. This is a one-time shot to fix this. We need to fix it.
Please make sure that's in the minutes, will you? Go ahead, John, you were gonna say something.
As you said, like, ARPA monies are in our, you know, general fund right now. If we get to the end of the year and we're short, you know, because of the, you know, the personal property or the, you know, trash pickup or, you know, just a bad year for collections. And now those funds are gonna be, you know, essentially, so that we're balanced. So, you know, the way we ended up with these VDOT funds could easily, the same reason, same thing that happens to our ARPA funds and we get two years down the road and y'all are asking, well, what happened to all our ARPA funds? And it's the same thing where they slowly got eaten away because at the end of the year, we're in a hole and we've got to make it up somehow. So that's.
And that's a reasonable thing. I think Doug wanted to say something, Doug?
Yes, sir. I, I'm sort of with John on this. I mean, I'm not opposed to what you're saying. But I would ask that we wait for the forensic audit and see what we've done wrong and then we correct the problem with the new council. I mean, that's my.
Why, I, what I'm telling you is, th, this is me speaking to all of you.[1779.12] and I know I'm not going to be here, but I'm telling you have one chance to fix this. If you do not take this ARPA funds, $1.5 million, pave the streets with it, and get this to a zero balance, you will never fix this. And if something, now, what Rod says, what Mayor said was correct. They did say it's highly unlikely. However, what if the state went into a shortfall? What if VDOT had a problem, and they said, "Well, you're not using this money. We're giving you too much money, so we want it back." If you did that, that would bankrupt our town. And that's why I'm telling you this is so important to fix it.
So Seth, this is a recommendation you're hoping will be taken into consideration in January. Let it be made for the record, please, that this recommendation should be taken under serious consideration in January.
And this should be added to the agenda for January, so that whoever is here will have to deal with this.
Mayor, if you'll let me speak under unscheduled citizen comments in January, I will come in.
Make sure you get to five minutes, okay?
I will remind you.
Don't do unscheduled.
You will not be on unscheduled, you'll be on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, that will...
Three minutes. I believe Heather wants to say something. We've talked about this enough, folks. Go ahead.
And, uh, I mean, that's how it gets mixed in, but we do keep separate spreadsheets for everything. So, like, I can tell you exactly how much we've gotten and exactly how much that we've spent. So, and that's the same with the ARPA, like, we keep... Even though it is mixed in, because, like, we have one general account, like, that's how we know that we got the money. I mean, obviously, just...
Unless there's something new to add to this discussion, I suggest we move on. Is there a new idea here?
Yes.
Sorry, Heather.
No, good.
Is there a new idea?
Yes. That's why I would suggest that we need to spend the ARPA funds.
Okay.
So that we don't rely on them.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, learn how to do our, yeah, sure. I mean, that's just, that's just my recommendation to it. I mean, we can sit on it and then get to this point again, that's what we don't want.
Let the record reflect that Jeff has suggested we use our ARPA funds, please.
Use them.
Okay, new idea.
You, yes, a new idea.
Letter L.
What Seth suggested, we'll kill two birds with one stone. If we do it right, if we can have that forensic audit done before the new council takes seat, then we'll know exactly where the money went, and we'll have a roadmap how to cure the problem.
What you're saying isn't wrong, but it's apples and oranges to what Seth is saying. That forensic audit, it, it doesn't matter where that money went at this point. What Seth is saying is, yeah, whether, uh, whether VDOT's going to come for it or not, right is right and wrong is wrong, and what Seth is saying is completely separate from VDOT. We've got to fix it, period, point blank. We're going to find, we're going to do the forensic audit.
I agree with that, but what Heather said a few minutes ago, with all due respect, that's how we got in the problem, having the money in the same account. Because I was on council five years ago. The former town manager came in with this, before he sat down, he looked at all of us and he said, "I've done something wrong. I've spent a million dollars I should not have spent." Okay, if that had been in a separate account like Seth suggested, I think you suggested that, then that could not happen if you keep it in a separate account.
But that's not what I'm saying. I'm, I'm just saying that if you, that, that's not common accounting practices. But what I'm saying is, we, we need to utilize the funds that we have to get this back to a zero balance. Now, as long as they're...
And start paving.
You're moving forward.
Right, you're moving forward.
That's what I'm trying to...
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. That's what, you know, the problem happened, we can fix it. We're lucky that we had the money to fix it, but it's one, I, I think you got one chance. And that's why, and our auditor agreed with us, we have one opportunity to fix it.
He said, he said it's built out of a lot of tannin, said it.
Yeah.
I remembered that in the conversation that I had with, uh, Corbin Stone, and Seth, and John, and Heather.
Thank you.
I believe we can move on.
Thank you, Seth.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Uh, okay, Public Safety Committee update. Laura?
The Public Safety Committee met, uh, was a very, 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 very good meeting. Uh, probably one of, out of the two years I've been to any meetings, um, council and otherwise, it was probably my favorite meeting that I've ever been in. Um, everybody was so willing to work together. There are a lot of issues that we identified. And just to be perfectly clear, the response times that we're seeing, the elevated response times really have nothing to do with 911 dispatch. Like we've said here and said, council has, previous councils have kicked the can down the road, and now we're playing catch-up. For so long, we have told fire and rescue, "Do more, do more, do more, do more, but we're going to give you less, we're going to give you less, but you keep doing it." So we identified those problems. One of them, the most important, being, um, the response times that we're seeing. And Matt Whitede was there, Keith Reynolds, and Ron Holt, and all three have plans to come in. They're going to need our support and more staff. We're going to have to address those pay gaps as well in those departments, and get more staff in there, more staff trained, uh, go, going to the county, you know, for our situation with the county, what we're responding to out there, and, um, having more resources for these departments to be able to respond, uh, more quickly and more efficiently to the citizens in Richlands. And I believe everybody in that room was more than willing to do so, and, um, very eager. Uh, there were a lot of great ideas of how to bring in more revenue that the department heads, all three department heads, were going to implement, and very willing and excited to see how we're going to move forward, bringing in more revenue and serving the citizens better.
Thank you, Laura. Um, shall we move on? Green Space Stage Name Discussion. I have a thought on this. Um, I had talked to John about it briefly. I suggest that any name for the, for the green space, which we used to call the Green Wave, which is a misnomer, I agree with that, uh, should be in the purvey of a new council. Before we name things about people, I'm very, we have done this in the past, I've supported it. Uh, but I think this is such a great space. Uh, if we choose anything, I would suggest a generic name like the Commons or something. I don't think at this time we need to be doing that. I don't know how the members of council feel, or the members of council feel, but that's my take on it.
I agree with you.
I agree, Mayor.
I agree with Mayor.
And, and I think of the more events that we have over there, and we've had a couple already, I think something will come from that.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we might have a good idea, you know, like Seth.
Well, he explained to me, I'll, I'll go into this, you know, when people send a message, "I'm at whatever," and it tags you, uh, the technology is so good, we can do that. But at this time, I, I'm really personally hesitant to choose any person. I, I think when we do this, we need to consider, there's this person you can see as a big leader in something, there's all those support people around them who are a part of that, and I think we need to think about that before we start naming things. That's my personal view. Uh, it may not be what council feels, but that is Rod Curry's personal view. I like generic names. Thank you. Let's move on.
Are we tabling it for the new council, or are we just...
Yeah, yes, we don't need to mention that until January. Take it off. Thank you. Five-minute recess. Thank you. Okay. Ready to walk?
Okay.
My family, love them, love them, love them. That's what we called. The Richlands Town Council will now reconvene. We are on Roman numeral nine, Town Manager Report. Okay, my man, let's go for it, John.
I'm gonna mix things up a little bit. I only have one item for miscellaneous, then I'm gonna give a calendar, kind of update of what all we have going on. The roofing RFP for the four buildings, that's been put out on EVA. We've had a couple companies reach out for some clarification. We're planning on getting that in the newspaper, hopefully next week, and then hopefully we get enough bids in that we can have a discussion on how we go forward with that. We've got a busy calendar this month. The first item is we have, on November 10th, we have an event for Chief Ron Holt, basically a welcome event for him to the community. Council will be hosting that, so there'll be a small fee or small cost to that that will go to council's miscellaneous line. But it's on November 10th from 11:00 to 1:00 p.m. I wanted you all to get that on your calendar, I hope to see you all there, make you all aware of that event that we have going on. The second item is the Mad Hatter event that the library's putting on, this is a fundraiser. That's October the 15th at 6:00 p.m. They'll be closing down Suffolk Avenue, right in front of the library for that event. If you don't have your tickets yet, reach out to one of the representatives from the library and they'll be happy to get you some tickets for that event. The town is essentially celebrating Halloween on the 22nd with our events. We've got the trunk or treat at the PD from 4:30 to 5:00.
Run that by me again, John, on the what date?
October 22nd is when the town will have our town Halloween event.
Trunk or treat?
It's the weekend before Halloween.
Okay, I wanna make sure, okay, yeah, sorry.
So the PD will have trunk or treat from 4:30 to 5:45. Afterwards, Direct Park has partnered with Ramp Up to do a movie night at the Green Space.
On the same date?
Yes, so essentially when the trunk or treat's over, people can go over to the other event, their wrap-up and start about the same time, there's a little bit of overlap. So at 5:30, they're gonna have a meet and greet of the Sanderson Sisters from Hocus Pocus, and then they're gonna play Hocus Pocus at 6:30 for anybody that wants to come out.
Where is that gonna be?
At the Green Space stage.
Okay, the comments, the comments, I like the comments, it's like we're in Boston, go ahead.
Council meeting for November 1st has been moved up a week. As you know, the second Tuesday is Election Day, so we'll have the meeting on the 1st of November, so make sure you all have that on your calendar. So, you know, it doesn't come as a surprise when you get the agenda packet delivered to you. And then the last thing we have is November 3rd at 5:30, we will have our annual Veterans Day dinner at the PD. We're gonna continue to have that outside this year.
November what?
3rd.
I wanna make sure I'm getting all this.
Yeah, you need to give an opening speech, I'm sure.
What now?
We'll get you down for a speech.
I will do it. You really serious?
Yeah, November 3rd at 5:30.
Do you want me to do that?
I'm sure we'll have, you're on the agenda.
I didn't even know.
Needs to be short.
What's the date of it, please, November the 3rd?
At 5:30, Thursday.
The 1st is Tuesday.
Okay, I'm just making sure, I don't have that on here. It's Veterans Day, I'm glad you told me, I didn't know about it, thank you, John.
Yeah, Thursday.
And I was joking, I don't need to have a speech, but whatever.
Thank you, we're trying to keep about the similar schedule from last year with different, you know, speakers.
Okay.
But if you're available, we'll definitely put you down.
Is there any way you could put that in an email sheet to us or not?
All these dates?
Please?
Yeah, I can send that out.
Okay. I'm trying to write them all down, put them in a calendar.
Yeah, I'm a little lost here. Who's doing the veterans thing? I thought Ginger was involved, right?
Yeah, Ron Holt, you know, someone kinda jumped as soon as he got here, said, hey, is this something we wanna continue? He's on board, and then Ginger's helping us facilitate that. We've reached out to the high school, we've got some of the students participating, so we've got some different community partners, every year it's a little bit different, but...
Okay.
We're working on trying to get all the names and everybody down. We have a meeting tomorrow to kind of finalize any changes and, you know, the final details.
Okay, okay, I got it, thank you.
So we hope to see you all, you know, these events and anybody from the public that's watching or here, more than welcome, we hope to see you all there.
What time is the dinner, seriously?
It starts at 5:30.
At the?
Place is outside on the 3rd, right?
Thank you, all right. Okay, John, does that complete your report?
That's everything I had.
All right, thank you. Attorney comments, teen venture lease, utility and maintenance discussion, okay.
Last month, last month when we were here, council approved to pay the utilities for Teen Venture. Been provided with a lease here that I believe was in your packet as well. The lease, the building is owned by the town and is leased out to Teen Venture, and they are responsible for their own utilities and maintenance. So I just wanted to call your all's attention to that, to let you know that that's the lease that they had signed. Of course, this was signed back in 2005. It's automatically renewed unless somebody's terminated it, but it can't go past 2005, I believe. We just wanted to call your attention that there was, you know, an acknowledgement of them, that they would pay their own utilities, but I know that you all approved to pay the utilities for a year, so maybe wanna look at...
I wanna comment on that. Seth, did you make, did you comment about maybe something like that, about maybe we should just call it a donation?
I think that's what we did, we, I don't think we...
Did we actually?
We called it a donation.
What was the actual motion, can we refer to that? I, I thought it was a motion for electricity.
We made, yeah, we made a motion to make it a donation, if we need to change that, we can.
I think we might. Go ahead, Heather.
Yeah, we set it on a map.
Ten thousand dollars.
Well, it says we pay Teen Venture's utility bill up to 10,000.
Yeah, but it was like not supposed to go past like the budget, like, do you see what I'm saying?
Right, what I'm, I do, I think I do, but what I'm driving at is a slightly different point. It says that we are paying the utilities but, for 10,000 bucks, but this lease says they're paying their own, right? So we might need to alter that.
We should make, change that, make a donation to them, then they can use the money and pay utilities.
Boy, we need to amend the motion because the motion says utilities, is that correct? Make sure I'm right.
Looking at the minutes from last meeting, it says, of course, this is you, well, it was Laura's motion, I make a motion that we pay Teen Venture's utility bill up to $10,000 for the fiscal year ending on the 23rd.
I think would be better, is that what you understand, folks?
If we go...
Based on what you're talking about, the lease?
Mr. Mayor, but if we do a 10,000, we have to write them a check as a donation.
I don't know, I'm just...
If we do it as utility, 'cause they're in a hard spot.
I'm not against the money, I'm just trying to get it right.
Well, the deal still gets charged, somebody still has to pay it, so either we allocate the money and pay the utility, it's six and one half dozen of those.
Couldn't we just give them a credit? Is there any need to alter that, Mike?
I just wanted to call your attention to the lease itself, that that's their, basically their one obligation under their lease, is to do that, and then of course...
I just wanna make sure. I didn't hear that.
I'm just picking on it.
Well, we didn't have. I, I'm looking for legal advice here, what do you think, we just let it stand as it is, or do you want us to reframe that notion? Resend it, reframe it, I'm asking.
I don't think as far as legally, there's anything wrong with it, just that the...
Had they drawn that down yet?
Yeah, we just, we just signed the check.
Okay, that's why I asked you.
And we did say it was only for this fiscal year, so if they wanted...
Maybe we could revisit it next year or something.
Yeah, so, I mean, that was my thinking.
So whatever their bill was, they just came in and said, hey, we're gonna draw it out. It's just semantics at that point, then, there's no need to change it if you're...
Well, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't have something in the future to lay bad groundwork for a future council. Heaven forbid that we would do that, and all of a sudden we're in problems, you know, like, here's what the lease is, and you did it against the lease, that's what I'm asking.
We did put a time limit on it.
Okay, I'm understanding, I just wanted to make clear about it, thank you.
The only question I'd have is, you know, the roof, in their lease, it says they're responsible for all maintenance. So is that something we're still gonna fit the, you know, foot the bill for, or is that something that we should expect them to pay for or help with, or... And they've also asked for an HVAC since our last meeting, so I'd need some direction on how much of the maintenance are we taking on, or is it still on them?
I don't know, council.
Are they doing any fundraising or any attempts to get funds from other places?
They are doing fundraising.
And I think, I think the, I don't think that we, at this time, do anything other than what we already promised, but we do need to look at this roof. You know, just, we need to figure out how much is that gonna cost, but I think that this is a unique situation for them. I don't think they're in a place where they've been before, all of their funding has kinda canceled out, and I think what we did was an effort to make sure that they didn't close their doors.
Absolutely, it was very much so.
And if we don't take care of the roof, they very well may close the doors, we're gonna be responsible for the roof at that point anyway, so...
Let's look at that when it comes in and make that decision, once we know.
I think that's fine, so shall we move on then?
Yes.
All right, I'm glad I asked it, thank you. All right, go ahead, Mike, what else? Utility, anything else, man?
I don't have anything else, man.
Council member reports, these are non-voting items, Rick.
Me and Mr. Curry, Mayor Curry, and Mr. Daniels met at Mrs. Cox's house, and John took some pictures, Mr. Daniels took some pictures. Our water line is on her property line. So, all she's asking is for us to do a place she can park her car. She's parking three football fields closely, just gets away and walking to her house, carrying her groceries. So, Mr. Daniels, I mean, me and him talked, he kindly don't wanna intrude on private property. But she's a lot nicer to y'all and me than I would be, 'cause if your water line crossed my property and you didn't have permission, I'd dig it in too and wouldn't let you fix it, but she's been real nice. So I do wanna help her somehow or another get to where she can park her car.
Were you suggesting anything, or what's your recommendation?
Is there a workable fix, is there a way to do it?
It is, it, it's a way to fix it. She ain't gonna have a level parking spot, but she'll have a parking spot, so she can get off the road. I think we need to take the topsoil out, put some gravel in, let her back up on it, and I think we'll be okay.
John, you, you were wincing, do you want to say something?
It goes back to doing, you know, work on private property to improve, you know, the property that, you know, we can have the attorneys look at the, the water. The water issue where her property is not where she's parking, it's two, it's kinda separate.
Let me ask you this, so we might be able to solve this, kill both birds with one stone there, but is that if we don't have a proper easement, why don't we draft a water easement for the water line, and in return for that, we provide, she signs the easement to give us permission to have our water line on our property, and we give her a parking spot, which is completely above board and legal.
Like a one-time, Dennis, on her to maintain it.
That's reasonable.
Right, that's all I want.
But when we put the sewer lines in, like Birmingham, there was a lot of special circumstances where, yeah, I signed the, or, you know, this person signed the easement.
To me, it sounds like it used to be a much smaller lane, and everybody was like, yeah, let's do it, but that may have been before they did easements and things of, you know, that nature, so...
I'll share with you what I think happened, based on her description, and we listened intently. The street in which she lives was once a very small lane, and I believe that her, her survey is correct. And probably out of habit, we developed much of this out of habit, she parked on the street that was the street and on her land. As the town paved over the years, we inched closer and closer and got over on her property, nobody said anything, and ultimately, we're paving on her property, and it has deprived her of a parking space. She recounted about Carla Mahaffey, I think it was, who told her she had, was not meeting the setback for the addition she did to her house was 30 feet. And so she measured it from this new addition at that time to the road, and that means the road really is on her property. I don't know what you call those kinds of rights, but I think it's just something that's just happened out of habit on both parties. I think we really are on her property, but it doesn't really matter, I think the proposal, I wanna share with you what I envision happened, happening, because anybody can park on the side of the road, before you know it, they paved a little bit here, a little bit here, and all of a sudden, you don't have a place to park, which is essentially what happened. So it's the history of her use and the town's use, no harm was ever done, there's no malicious things at all, she just needs to fix. I think the proposal that Seth and Rick Hoover said that is the proper thing to do. So do you want a motion of the council, or do you wanna just draft this thing up? What's the proper, proper way to go here?
Well, I haven't looked into it to whether there is one or not.
Well, why don't you do that?
Okay, I can look at that, and if there is, if there is not one, I can draft one up.
Would you do that? Is that acceptable to the council?
As long as you add the road too, because three foot of the road that we're using is her property.
But not where she's wanting to park.
Not where she wants to park, it's down the lane.
But I think what we can do, I think it's just an easy way to, it's a fair exchange. You give us an easement to cross your property, or put the water line in, or use three feet of your property to drive on. In exchange for that, we'd make a real simple repair and fix for her.
I think so, that's a great suggestion.
And that way, we're not, we're not improving anyone's private property without an exchange.
Okay, Rick, anything else?
Thank you all, it's all I have, yes.
All right, Seth?
Yeah, just one thing, Mayor. Last meeting, we discussed and corrected an issue where a private residence had a demand meter. I stand by this, I still stand by this today, no private residence should have a demand meter. And later, a couple weeks later, Summer and Robbie Minor, or Summer Minor told me that her house, which is Billy Sue's house, it's never been a business, it's always been a residence. It also has a demand meter, so I'm asking tonight, and I'll put it in form of motion, whatever we need to do, that you remove the demand meter and just bill them for residential power.
Is this the property across from Coltown?
Yeah, correct.
So essentially, the first floor of that building has to be commercial. It lost its, you know, for zoning, it lost its zoning status as residential, so that's the issue that's coming to play.
Run that by me again, please.
The first floor in our downtown, so when it was a house, it can remain a residential unit on both floors until it's not been occupied as residential, I think for, you know, 12 months or a year or something. In that time period, elapsed where there was nobody living in there. And we tried to notify the individual that was selling it, let them know, hey, this has lapsed, the first floor needs to be commercial, second floor is residential, is my understanding. So that's essentially why there's a demand meter on the first floor, it's supposed to be commercial, and the second floor is residential.
We need to fix that.
Yeah.
I completely disagree with that.
John, I'll share a little bit, I think, I understand what you're saying, I think the interpretation needs a little polish, can we take that up later?
I mean, those are the rules in zoning.
I don't think that's quite accurate.
I talked to Planning Commission, I guess we just don't...
I think that the commission should, I'm not here to dispute you, but I really don't think that's an accurate interpretation. My question is this. Does, I've heard this thing about one year, was it not occupied, did Tommy King not sell it to them, I guess it was Tommy.
It's my understanding that it's been more than a year since it's been occupied as...
He lived in that, Tommy stayed in that house many nights.
Well, I don't know, but I'm gonna suggest the first floor business doesn't make sense, second floor, there's something not right in my head about that, and I'd have to look it up, and I do understand what you're saying, I think there's a little, something askew in that interpretation. I'm not blaming you or faulting you, I, you know, or maybe you don't, but I think we need to think about that very carefully before we say that's the rule. There's nuances to all that, and I really think the commission could perhaps help, but please bear with me.
And that's just, that's why, you know, why the...
I, I completely understand, but what I'm asking tonight is that we correct that and we remove the demand meter. It's, it's always been a residence, they've never operated a business out of that location, no business has ever been operated out of that location. And, and I'll stand by this tonight, I think if any citizen in this town is on a demand meter, there's no business in that location, you need to remove the demand meter.
I completely agree.
It's not, it's not proper.
I, I just wanna share my thinking, and it's not exactly what they're saying, and I don't disagree. But the first floor business, second floor, but in that case, it was always a house, there was no first and second floor, there is a second floor. I grew up with friends in that house, Nancy Brown Barton, I could go on about that, but nonetheless, I think we need to rethink how that is framed, my suggestion, John. I'm not here to admonish you or anything, so please, if you're feeling that way, please don't feel that way.
When I read the zoning, that's what I said, so it's...
But I don't think that it...
Accurate interpretation.
I don't think that it failed to be occupied either, and I think that could be...
And that could be, but when we sent it to the, the individual that was selling it, we sent them a message, hey, based on what we're hearing, it's not been occupied, this is, you know, these are the requirements, you know, when you sell it, they need, whoever buys it needs to know, and we never heard back, so I, we did what we could to try to, you know, engage.
Right, five situations.
But you never, you know, heard back or got that, you resolved.
Maybe they could discuss the Planning Commission and make a suggestion, and then we could bring it forward.
Yeah, two, two, two separate items, yeah.
All right.
And moving forward, we can make that...
Are you advocating on behalf of Summer Minor to take this out of her house?
Yes.
What do you wanna do?
I put that in form of motion that you have the demand meter removed from their residence.
I'll second that motion.
Are you looking quizzically, Mr. Mike?
I don't think Mr. Daniel heard our motion.
I heard the motion, but, you know...
I just wanted to point it out, Mayor, that the, just to stay consistent with this, these are non-voting items, and I know that you've cut off previous council members before, so I just wanna be consistent with that.
We need to consider that, and thank you for helping me do the right thing, these are non-voting items, I would suggest we hold on that until the next meeting.
John, remove her demand meter.
We let, the last one, I believe it was Councilman Ratliff, he had a non-voting item, and he did it right after the councilman member reports, so...
Okay, we can do that, if that's the will of the council.
If you don't mind to hold on that, we'll put it right there.
Well, let's hold on that, and thank you for reminding me.
These demand meters have got to come off the residences, and anybody who has one can contact this council, and I will advocate for them to come off the residences.
Then we need to update whatever our policy is, 'cause essentially, we have two types of meters, you know, we call them residential, but really, it's one that just does how much they use, and one says, hey, they used a whole lot in a short period of time, so they put excess demand on our system, so we charge them a little bit more. Traditionally, if a house is built, the way it's wired and the breaker panel, you'll never, it'll flip a breaker before you hit that demand. So essentially, you know, the cheaper meters, what we put on your residential, but these properties are putting that huge load onto the system, it's kind of where, yeah, I haven't, that's why I'm reluctant, you know, if they're putting this huge demand...
So when she moved into the house, was it, was there a residential, and then you just decided to put her on a demand? Or when she bought that house, did you automatically put her on the demand?
From what I, my understanding was that they had switched it out, I didn't know they switched it out, but when it no longer became a residential, they switched it out, but, you know...
See, that's not right. So are there two meters on that house?
No, it's just one.
That's not right. How can there be a demand meter on the bottom, but you have the top is raked?
We have a lot of buildings in town that, you know, very complicated.
I do know that, but that's not right.
But if that's the direction council wants to go, I just wanna find some way where we have a policy so we know what to do, so we don't have any more of these...
I would suggest at this time, we move this to the Planning Commission to formulate a solution.
Well, it's two separate things, the power meter being one, the other issue, I wanna help you resolve that too, you know.
But we have two issues, one is Summer Minor's in particular, and the other is the greater issue of demand meters, lower floors, upper floors, and houses that have not been occupied for a year, et cetera, it's very complex, thank you. We take that to the commission, and they can come back with a recommendation as they can. Okay, so Seth, is there any other thing you want to talk about?
No, sir, that's all.
Okay, Laura?
I've just got a few things tonight, can I have an update on the street light on Mason Street when that will be installed?
I thought they were working on that, I'll follow up.
Okay, thank you. The other thing I had was the drains in Hidden Valley, I had a citizen contact me about the similar situation, but we've already addressed that. Something else, the minutes of air committee meetings are not being posted, and per the FOIA, Virginia FOIA law, we need to have those minutes posted. Actually, as of September 1st, we need to have the draft minutes posted within 10 days of their meetings, and the approved minutes need to be posted within 30 days. And in some of those committees, they've not been posted in 10 or 11 months. Can I also have an update on the delinquent tax collections, the RFP that was supposed to be put out for that?
We still working on the RFP, I'm sorry, I got a couple examples, but they were very complicated, but I'll get it out this week.
Okay, thank you. Also, we talked about the personal property tax relief, and ironically, we're talking about electric bills now. I think that council needs to consider some sort of electric bill relief during this winter. We have a very, I believe it's a very unfair way to be put on a payment plan, to be put on the payment plan, you cannot have been late on a bill if you own your home within 12 months, and if you rent within 24 months, those plans are skewed against the very people who are, who need them the most. Prior to online billing, there were times I was late on my bill just because I didn't wanna drive into town, and I thought paying the extra little bit on it would, was more convenient for me than getting dressed and coming into town. So whatever's gonna be easier for you, Mr. Daniel, and Ms. Perry about what that electric bill relief is gonna look like, whether it be reducing the late fee, or doing something like no disconnects in wintertime, or revising this payment plan to make it easier for citizens to be on that payment plan, if you could bring that to the next meeting. I'm not trying to make things harder on you, but it's gotta be easier on the citizens too, and that's all I've got, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Laura, get all that, John. Thank you, Laura, Jeff?
I just wanna thank, like I said, Tony Cordell and the Rec Commission for what they did, and doing all the hard work that they do, putting together that list and working on their updates. I also wanted to mention the Homecoming Parade is this Thursday night, 6 o'clock, lineup's gonna be at 5:30 at the Richlands Tabernacle Church with the construction at the bridge, Pastor Hardee's, they're gonna, they're gonna line up there, come up Tazewell Avenue, I believe. I believe, over to Battle General, and then make a left onto Front Street, and then end at the police department. So just wanted everybody to be aware of that and come out and support it. And one update, I didn't know, I was going to ask John, what about the, I had several calls, brush truck, brush piles?
The grapple truck was finally fixed, so anybody that has anything they've put out, you give us a call at Town Hall, we'll put a work order in, and make sure they don't, you know, miss it, because they're going to be going to those places that have called you first, and if they happen to pass you, they're going to pick it up, but, you know, if you want to make sure your stuff gets picked up, keep Town Hall calling, I haven't put in a work order.
And one other citizen had reached out to me about a light at the POW display at the Armory, or I mean Armory, I was killed at the Armory, Police Department.
The chair, they put out some, like, solar LED ones that I don't, to see if that was, you know, enough to what they were asking for. I think there was a question about, you know, having to run another electrical wire, and if you put something bright, you don't want to shine it back on the road, but.
The gentleman just told me the light was there, or it had been, the light, they had to shine on it.
I don't know, I know that they talked about putting one from what Laura mentioned to me, but I know that Allen put out a couple little, like, solar, you know, as long as they haven't been, like, mowed over or anything, they should still be there. If they're not there, you know, I'll definitely take a look this evening and see.
He did send me another light, he said it really wasn't.
Bright enough.
Bright enough to be on that chair, and that chair obviously deserves the respect of the town from it, and he sent me, it was like $60 on Amazon, but it is, does require the wire, and from what I was told from someone who was there.
Yeah, I think, I think we were just the easy, let's put something out there and see if this is bright enough before we go getting, you know, wiring and electrical and, I can have our guys take a look at it and see what it would take to put a full E-light, if that's what.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
I had had a citizen ask me where we were with Abenport, which we've already talked about, and then I've been working with John, trying to get some answers from the, for the R trips, and he, it has that in progress with the question still on why a business is paying garbage twice. So to me, that sounded like it might be something simple to fix, but.
We're working on it, it's more complicated than I thought.
Yeah, but I think both of my, my problems are in progress, so.
Anything else, Chris? Doug?
Yeah, I had calls about the chair too, having the lights, I'm glad you're going to correct that. One thing I'd like to suggest, which I'll make a motion later, that since we're having so many problems with the electrical system, that we have a special account only for the electric system, take it out of the budget and have its own checking account, so we can keep an eye on the electrical and make sure our reserves are correct, and that would clear up, that would clear up a lot of problems we have with the electrical system. And I would like, that could be easily done, we just have a special account for the electric. And one, one reason I'd like to do that is, do we have any rate increases soon for the electrical that were built in, it's after the first of the year?
No, I mean, we have rates that, you'll have to look at it, because from where we were to start of the year, we think we're going to have just enough to break even, maybe be a little bit under, but you'll have to look at, you know, the market and, depending on what all is going on. But, you know, I know AEP's done two or three rate increases in the last 12 months, so I would anticipate that their costs are going up, ours are likely going to follow.
I think theirs are going up on the average of $18 a household.
Yeah, it's something that's 20 and then something like eight.
Ours are a lot higher than AEP's, I promise you. Okay, what I'd like to explain is, probably three or four years ago, we had a reserve of a million two in our electrical fund with 2 million secured, which was around 3 million. With all these rate increases, in that two or three years, do you have any idea what our reserve is now? Okay, we have to, they changed the reserve from 1.2 to 1.5, so we've got to have one, a million and a half, but does anybody realize what our reserve is now? It's 2.2 million. Okay, what you're saying don't suffice with our reserve going up, 7, went up a million dollars in these few years.
Because you got, you have to base your rates on worst-case scenario versus best-case scenario. If we're doing based on best-case scenario and we have a bad year, then all of a sudden we're several hundred thousand dollars off, so usually we base it on the worst-case scenario, and then if we have worst-case scenario, we're still able to break even, but we've had several good years recently that.
Well, I mean, that's why you have 1.5 million reserve, that's to cover that, that's what's required, that's if you have a good and bad year. You've got over $700,000 more than the reserve, so that tells me that we jumped the gun and raised our rates higher than they should be.
But like, it could also be, you know, some major transformers or some, you know, expenses in the department.
The sun could fall, I mean, that's if, 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 they give you.
That's why you don't, you know, present a budget to run a deficit.
I mean, anybody tells me if, 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 they've lost the argument, okay, to me.
If you want to start budgeting at a negative.
I mean, you've got 1.5 million dollars, that would cover any problem that you would have, and give us enough time if we, if we blew through a million and a half, that's what's required. Don't you think they do studies and check to see what we should have in reserve? You're out guessing, gee, or what is it, your, your experts?
I'm just saying, I don't.
Well, I mean, why would you have, why would you raise rates and you have $700,000 over your reserves? And now you're telling me just about a few minutes ago, and I'm not, you know, I'm just saying.
We haven't got there yet, like, we haven't even talked, started budgeting, so.
Well, I mean, why would you raise rates and even think about it when you've got, you've got 2.2 million in reserve, you've got another 2 million in secured funds, you've got over $4 million in that electrical fund? Think of that. And yet, we've been raising rates for the last three years, and the electric fund is getting rich, and our citizens are getting poor. I mean, it's no logic to it. So what I'm saying, and I'm going to make a motion, we need to move that electrical fund out of the general budget, put it in a separate fund of its own, then the council should get a report on the reserves every month to keep an eye on that electrical, because I assure you, and we all know, in the next few years, it's going to be a challenge to keep our rates down, much less trying to build reserves.
So John, where's the money for the battery farm and stuff going to come from? Is it coming out of that fund as well, out of electrical?
Reserves.
Out of the reserves? And how much is that, that we're expecting to allocate for that?
I would have to, I don't have it off in my head, I'd have to pull the, you know, the numbers.
Because we're going to have to come up with that, too.
After a few months, we're supposed to be in a positive. I mean, we're not taking money and having to buy something, we have no money upfront, okay? And they're assuring us after the first few months, we're going to, I think the first year they're estimating, we're going to make $600,000. I mean, that's not going to take any of the reserves of what you're talking about. I mean, if, if we make $600 a year, we can decrease rates, you know?
I think after, maybe the first month, but after that, it should, you know, cycle itself.
I don't remember at what point they said we would.
It was the first month.
It's like a year, though, we have to spend the money and takes that to build it, there's, there's like a whole year you're waiting, you're spending money and not getting anything in return.
Not getting anything for it.
And it's like 12,000, it's $12,000 a month.
Pardon?
It's like $12,000 a month.
Yeah, but I think in the first year, you'll start seeing.
You get nothing the first year.
First year, we don't get anything.
So you're going to spend 144,000 or more the first year.
Okay, you're going to spend 144,000, you've got 700 to play on before you even hit your reserves. I mean, it makes no sense at all to raise these rates on these poor people out here, and you're building your reserve from 1.2, and you've went to 2.2 million in about three years. I mean, there's something stinks.
Okay, Doug, you have anything else?
No, that's it.
Thank you.
Mayor, I apologize, there was one other thing from Jeff and I's, our meeting that, that I failed to mention. The, we, we need to, maybe at our next meeting, put a plan together as a, as a council. One of the things that the auditor told us that, you know, we have all this money, extra money in reserve, and we should look at investing in some short-term CDs. Interest rates have dramatically risen, and instead of just having those, that money in a non-interest-bearing account, we can do short-term CDs. Yes, Corbin's recommendation to, and I failed, I'm sorry, I failed to mention that, but, but yeah, he told us to do that because we just need a plan, and I don't know if John is, normally what we would do, I guess we'd put out a RFP for, you know, six-month, nine-month CDs, whatever, you want to stage them in, because you're tying your funds up, you know, make sure there's certain provisions, but if, if we, maybe we can work on that, have it ready so we can put an RFP out by the next meeting or after the next meeting.
We have to look at it and see what.
Yeah, it's just.
We just don't want to top too much funds, and then we're not, your cash flow.
No, no, he said stage them, but he just said, with interest rates increasing, there's some real attractive rates on short-term, and that we could gain a lot of, I mean, because we have millions of dollars sitting in, you know, accounts right now. Loads of money, Rob.
Well, I'm just hearing, on one hand, we're broke, on the other hand, we've got millions of dollars, moving on. Can we move on?
It's confusing.
Yeah, I'm just going to move on.
Can I make a motion?
No, not yet, I haven't opened the floor for it, okay? Any other members of council who want, and Seth had the first go at this, any other members of council want to add to their reports? Okay, Seth, you wanted to make a motion.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we remove the demand meter on Summer Robbie Miner's home, and due to the fact that it is a residence, so please remove the demand meter and install a residential power meter.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded, made by Seth, seconded by Laura, to remove the demand meter on the home that belongs to Robbie and Summer Miner. So to be clear.
On Fairfax Avenue.
On Fairfax Avenue, are we going to backtrack and try to do anything different, or from this day forward?
No, from this day forward.
The bills stand as they are?
Yes, correct, no.
I just wanted to be sure, because we don't get into that mess.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm not trying to get, no, I'm just saying.
Making sure.
The day forward.
Because we have had that kind of discussion previously, and I think we need to be real clear of what we're doing.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you, motion carries, it's unanimous. Doug?
I'd like to make a motion that we instruct the town manager to move the electrical system to its own separate account out of the budget, the major, the main budget, and I would make that motion.
Okay, Doug has a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Laura seconds the motion to create a separate checking account, basically, for the electric department.
My only concern, I would prefer Heather at least weigh in to make sure there's nothing, we don't want to create, you know, I understand the logic behind what Doug's asking, I want to make sure we're not creating another problem that we aren't realizing.
I understand.
Could I ask you a question?
She'll come back in a minute.
How many accounts have you got, like 25?
But I don't, I don't know how the electrical is connected.
I mean, you've got a, you've got a separate account for everything.
But I think that's also a problem.
Some, the accounts, my reasoning on this is that out of those 25 accounts, and some of them have to be separated, like the asset forfeiture stuff, I mean, there's, that's legal, you, there's no getting around that, but we do have some unnecessarily separated accounts that need to be combined where they can, but for two and a half years, I have watched people sit up here talking about, it's this amount coming out of electric, no, it's not, well, we're taking it when we need it for the budget, no, we're not, yes, we are, this is going to put it to rest. I mean, if you're taking money out of the electric that shouldn't be, we're going to see it in a transfer, period, point blank, so that's where I'm coming from with it.
I'm okay with it from the fact that, like, we talked about earlier, I think common accounting practice, like on the VDOT stuff, it, maybe it'd be easier if we could do it, but maybe it's not. But with this, this is, basically, this is a unique thing to our town and a handful of other ones in the state of Virginia, and to have all electric funds in a separate account is probably a much cleaner way to treat that, I'm okay with that.
And I agree, I just want to make sure there's nothing that we.
Here's Heather. Heather, John wants you to weigh in on this motion. Doug has made a motion that we take all money from the electric department and put it in a separate checking account, so it's easily identifiable. He wants your opinion on it, about bookkeeping.
The electric department already has, I mean, you call it a checking account, but you could transfer money in now all you wanted to, I mean.
Well, I call it, maybe I'm wrong, Doug, do you mean a checking account?
No, that's what he's asking for, but the thing is, it would be no different than what it is now, it's all got separate, different account numbers.
It would, it would be completely different. I mean, I disagree with you, if it has, it'd be easier to keep up with if you have a separate, just like VDOT, we talked about having a separate account for it, the same thing goes for the electrical. And in order, I'm not coming down on the town manager, but a statement was made about a year ago, oh, if our budget's in a shortfall, we'll just take out the electric. Okay, that's too easy, okay? We need it walled off separate, where if any money's taken out of that electrical, then we will know it each month and be asked to do that. That's, and why do we want to do it for electrical? Is because the, the next few years are going to be a challenge to keep those rates where those citizens can pay them.
Okay, thank you, Doug.
I think what, and what he's saying, Heather, and I'm not trying to speak for Doug, but I think what he's, what he's trying to say is like, let's say you had all the electrical money in there, but you did get into a place where you're in a shortfall, you needed to make a transfer, let's say $100,000, temporary transfer to cover the budget. Then when the tax revenue comes back in, then that $100,000 would be transferred back in to the electrical account, but what that would create is a cleaner, auditable record of what's being transferred in and out.
I just want to get somewhere, like, every single time we got to pay an electric bill or transfer, we're writing, I just, like, I don't know the logistics of what you're asking, so I would just ask for, you, can we have till next month?
Consideration.
Figure out how it would work to make sure there aren't any.
Well, I think, and I, I told Doug, I think you probably need to.
I want to share a thought, and I appreciate what it be, I appreciate where you're going with it, and I don't think it's a bad idea. I heard you say, if I'm wrong, Heather, please correct me, you want to check with Corbin, our auditor, about how, how this could do things? Sometimes, I'm not against what you're saying, Doug, I think it's a good idea, sometimes things we do have unintended consequences, and I think that's where she's headed, is that?
I feel like that can be, it can cause some issues, you know, because we have monthly bills, and, you know, I know that is what you're saying, but like, a lot of times, we come in here, you know, and I think Doug said it before, we've already paid those bills, it's just basically like a.
Is that what's happening with electric? I mean, just plain and simple, are other bills getting paid from the electric fund, and then you guys are replacing that money when that, when the other money comes in? It's just that simple, yes or no?
No, that's not, that's not how it works, like, it, I mean, to me, there's really no difference, I mean, you got a electric, like, those, everything that comes in and out has something tied to it, I mean, it's no different than a checking account, like, it all has individual numbers specifically for the electric department, anything that's paid in or out will show in those account numbers, they're all separate.
Ledger numbers.
They're ledger page.
What's the difference in having a separate account for VDOT? We have several separate accounts, and you're just making, if you, it's just a much cleaner system, I talked to some of the electrical guys, they don't, they're trucks, their trucks won't high-run, because we neglect the electrical system and use it for other things. We couldn't buy a $125,000 switch because we didn't have the money, supposedly. Okay? If we have a separate account, when they have at need of a truck, or they need a slip Okay? If we have a separate account, when they have a need of a truck or they need a slip switch, then the electrical system for sure is gonna have it. It's not mixed into the budget. And I'm not gonna withdraw my motion.
Is it all in one big pot, is what I'm asking?
There's the general fund pot, there's the electric pot, there's the water pot, and there's the sewer pot.
So I actually am the one who brought up the comment that you had made that he keeps referencing. So can you explain that?
I think that was when we were discussing some of the VDOT stuff and how when we don't have any reserves in general fund, we get to the end of the year and we've spent, you know.
If you spend over, basically what the auditors were saying, if you don't have the money and you're, no, it's highly frowned upon, but if they were to come and call on the VDOT money, then we're gonna have to pull it from somewhere, which would be, they all three have said, not just electric.
Well, that's not what I'm talking about. The comment that I'm referencing, I think council was still all right here. You and Doug were on that corner.
I mean, whatever it was.
He was saying what he always says about electric, and you did say that, he said, you're taking money out of electric, and you said, well, if we write a check, we have to cover it. That money has to come from somewhere.
We just fixed the budget.
So that sounds very.
I think we're all saying the same thing. Like, whatever I say, I.
To be clear, I don't remember this. Is this like some comments, casual comments?
No, this was.
In the formal meeting?
They, we have formal meeting. It's on YouTube. They were arguing about the electric. So, I mean, I'm just, I'm trying to understand, too.
Now I have a better understanding of exactly, because it's so convoluted and not easy to, because we don't have the reserves. Like, most places have a reserve in every fund. So you know, you know, that I've worked through it more, you know, I have a better understanding of, you know.
I mean, you have a reserve in the electrical. You don't have to worry about it. And as far as a budget, we do a budget every year. You shouldn't, you know, have a problem. And, I mean, look at the problem we've had in the last few years. Our reserve has grown and grown and grown, and it went without notice until I asked a few questions.
But general fund is where we're having the issues.
Well, electrical's where you're having, people cannot pay their electric bills. And you've made it tremendously hard for all those citizens out there. And it's time that we take a look and take measures to rein you in, or rein the town in, I should say.
These are all set by ordinance voted on by the council to make it clear. Can we move forward? There's a motion and a second on the floor. So is there any further discussion? If not, I will ask for a roll call vote.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, one more question. So there is, you do have the electrical money in a separate fund now?
No.
It's not sitting in the general fund?
No, no, it's, everything has electric, water, and sewer. I mean, here's the electric reserve.
So it does not sit into the general fund now?
No, it does not sit in the general fund. Electric, water.
So separating into a checking account is not going to change anything?
It's just gonna be separate money in a separate bank account. We have to move.
It's not, it's in the same fund. It goes to the general fund.
Do you have $4 million, like you say, in an electrical fund right now? Two million reserve, two million, 2.2 million reserve?
Four point one, one point five is required, two point three is, uh, aside, aside.
I was.
What's the other two million? Is that just?
It's, uh, it has to be set apart. It can't be used.
But it's set apart? I mean, I don't understand what, if it's in a separate fund, why do we need to put it? I'm not saying, I'm not, I'm not saying I'm against it. I'm not. I'm just saying, if she's already got it separated, I'd prefer you.
I would like to see it.
Okay, it's, it's in the same account. All the money's in one big pot.
You're telling me that, but Heather's saying it's not.
No, Heather will tell you it's in one, she's talking about, she's got it.
It's not in one account.
Okay, it's not in the same, I mean, is it, is it not in the same account?
If you're talking about a bank account, that's different.
That's what I'm talking about.
He's literally talking about a bank account.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's different. Okay, but we have separate breakdown of everything that is.
Well, that's, that's everything, Heather.
But if you have a, then you have a separate account for everything.
No.
If they have their own reserve, everything gets split up by account number.
Okay. All I'm, all we're asking is to set apart the electrical system because we're having problems and it's bleeding into the budget, okay? If you've set it separate.
No, it won't bleed into the budget because it's separate into the.
I'm going by what John said, okay? I'm saying, he said that and it's in the minutes, hey, if the budget's short, we'll just take it out of the electrical. That's the kind of attitude we don't want. You do it every year. Okay, okay, let me ask you this.
Just a minute, please. One second, Doug.
Yeah.
I'm understanding your point and Heather's, I kinda think we're at a point we need to take a vote.
But can I say one more thing?
I'd prefer that you.
Well, I prefer I do.
Well, just a minute. Well.
You had, you had, you can remove me if you want. You had $200,000 before you every admitted you took it out.
Because it's not proper. I'm trying to run a meeting, and when you're gonna say, I'd prefer that I do, it's not the way to approach people. So I'm asking you to say one thing and keep it short.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Before anybody ever admitted a year or two ago that money was being taken out of the electrical, it was hid, you decided all of a sudden, oh, we won't take the $200,000 out. We'll leave it in there to help the system, which had been denied for several years that you were taking out. Okay, that's the kind of things that happen when you have money mixed in with your budget. That's what I'm trying to tell you.
You know how to transfer out somewhere.
I know you transfer, but it was denied for years because it was hid. Nobody looked at the transfers out, okay? This way, if you have a separate account, honey, then we'll know when it's transferred out and it won't be hidden.
Okay, I think, are we all, have we all had our say? Thank you. Let's call, a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
I'll vote yes, but I would prefer that you talk to Corbin first before you do this.
Is that a conditional yes? I don't understand that.
No, I'm saying I'll vote yes.
I understand that.
I understand what Doug's saying. I understand what he's saying. I'll vote yes. I'm just saying, I really wish you'd talk to Corbin before we do anything.
Well, you could vote no and then do it later. I'm not trying to influence you. I'm just saying what I think, and I've said.
I mean, if there's something against it, they can tell us.
Laura.
Yes. I'm with Seth. I, this.
Before you go and open accounts, get, talk to Corbin and just.
Is there nothing wrong with asking a legislature editor, you know, maybe?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so the motion carries four to two. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Any other motions people wanna make tonight? This is it. Last chance. Thank you. Mayor's comments. First, thank everybody for coming tonight. It's always a spirited discussion. Well, sometimes more than others, but it's good to be here. Upcoming things, Veterans Day. I appreciate you letting me know that, John. And who's heading that again? Who's on that committee? I'm lost. You and who else? Okay. I'm just trying to understand all this. Okay. Next, thank you to people who are doing this for the community and honoring veterans. There's a lot to that. And the other thing is, the library fundraiser is this coming Saturday night. I hope it will be very nice. We hope for good weather. I'm not a part of that group, but I was strong-armed into buying a ticket, which I gladly did, okay, to support the library, I believe, and public libraries, and obviously. Several things ahead of my mind, but I think we've covered them. One, I had, I try, if I get citizen concerns, to relate those to the manager beforehand, and he did take care of it for Chad Ashby. Thank you very much. The other thing is, I mentioned at our last meeting, the section house is doing something for Halloween, and we will be meeting and deciding what we're doing. It will not be in conflict with any other group or whatever. We'll have something fun. And that's as much as I can think of to say right now at this hour. So I have nothing else to report. So if any, someone would like to make a motion, the mayor will entertain a motion to dismiss, and we will reconvene at our regular meeting November the 1st. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
So moved.
Jeff makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.